Okay, let's go ahead and call this meeting back to order at 5:38. Let's start with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Here.
Councilmember Sander.
Here.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Here.
Mayor Terry.
Here, thank you.
I'd ask the city attorney if he could report out from closed session, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, and members of the community. This afternoon, the city council met in closed session at 4:00 and took up one item of anticipated litigation. The city council received updates from and provided direction to legal counsel.
Thank you. Bear with me for a sec. This is our third roll call and second report out of closed session today. We'll move on to item nine, and I'd ask the city clerk to read the television announcement, please.
Did we want to take?
I'm sorry?
Did we want to take the roll call?
I just did. You just did.
Oh, thank you, sorry. I was picking up the public comment, got distracted.
Somebody called my name and I said here?
Thank you, sorry.
Guess that wasn't you.
It was me.
But I was looking down and taking notes.
Thank you, sorry. I was juggling a couple of different things.
That's all right.
All right.
Like I said, we've had two closed sessions and three roll calls today, so it's feeling like we've been here before.
Yes, okay. Our cable announcement. The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Wednesday, December 7th at 9:00 p.m. and Monday, December 12th at 9:00 a.m. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you very much. Next, we will have item 10, which will be our Pledge of Allegiance, which tonight will be led by Darryl Langwell. I'd ask the audience to remain standing for our invocation, which tonight will be presented by Elizabeth Brick with the United Methodist Church of Rancho Cordova.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is Elizabeth online?
She's not.
We don't have her?
She's not in the room, and she's not online.
Since we do not have our invicator, I'm going to just look over at Mr. Gatewood and ask him to lead us in short.
Heavenly Father, thank you for being with us tonight. Thank you for all these legislators. Thank you for these amazing citizens. Please bless us. Please watch over us as we make these decisions. Please walk with us as we deal with difficult but interesting situations. In your name, we pray.
Okay, colleagues, I'm going to ask for your understanding here, as we are going to have to skip a whole bunch of things on the agenda that are coming up next. Item 12, item 13, item 14, item 15, and 15 was a break, so sorry, we're going to get rid of that, too. The county unfortunately did not certify the election on Friday. I believe there was about 2,000 ballots left outstanding, and I'm hearing we might find out tomorrow. But as of tonight, we don't get to have fun and swear people in. So unfortunately, item 12, which was the certification of the November election, we cannot do. We can't do the special ceremonies and do the swearing ins, and we can't select mayor or vice mayor because we have two councilmembers here that their terms are about to expire, and they can't vote on it until they're sworn into their new terms. So with that, if there are no...
I will move that we continue everything to the 19th of December.
Do you have a second?
I second. I think we should do a lot of swearing on the 19th, right before Christmas.
So with that, I have a motion and a second to continue items 12 through 15. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. I'm not sure we needed a motion, but either way, it's all official.
So, Mr. Mayor, I assume that means we will swear in our council, returning council members, elect a mayor and vice mayor, and then subsequently swear them all in at once as well?
I believe our protocol would be to push the swearing in of mayor and vice mayor to January.
No, we don't need to do that. We've done it this way before, and it would be rude to ask people who are coming to participate in both to come back later.
My direction from the city manager was a little different than that.
No, you did not get direction from the city manager.
I will check with them. I'm not disagreeing with you, but we'll see.
Do we have an ordinance that applies here, Adam, or is this just our discretion?
So what you can't do is seat the council seat, the mayor, before you have...
But we can do it all in one meeting.
You can do it all in one meeting. I mean, you are allowed to do it as Mr. Budge and as Councilmember Budge, as Matt and Budge just said.
That's Lee, right, Mr. Budge?
Exactly. Excuse me. I was looking at Mr. Sander and...
That's all right.
Excuse me.
I think Mr. Mayor...
That's why I saw a lot of swearing.
Yeah, I know we talked through protocols of doing it tonight and how we would get to mayor and vice mayor by next meeting, so if we wanted to do it all at once, I have no problem with it.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a quick comment on that as well? Since my name was used, we do have a resolution that the council passed in 2004 that basically calls for the seating, the appointment, the seating of the mayors at the first meeting after the certification of the result. So we expect that the results will be certified in the next day or two, so the proper protocol would be to seat the mayor, vice mayor at the next meeting, next regular council meeting, which will be December 19th.
Right.
Do we expect certification tomorrow? Is that how that's going to roll out?
Anytime.
The next update will be tomorrow. There's no guarantee, but they counted more than 2,000 in the last round, so you would have assumed that they could, but I think legally they have until the 8th to do it. That's right. That's right. They can take that long. None of it... I think most of us were expecting it on Friday. Okay, with that, we'll move on to public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time via teleconference or by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. If you want to make a public comment via teleconference, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom center of your screen. If you're on an Apple product, it's in the top right. If you're participating by telephone and you want to make a public comment, please press star nine to raise your hand. For those participating by Zoom or telephone, please wait to be called upon by the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called upon by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less and state the name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do we have any public comments?
Yes. And I would ask that those who are participating in Zoom raise your hands as well.
This would be the time to raise your hand, and we'll take count of that. Go ahead, and you can start with the first three.
So let's start with James Garcia, who is in the room in the council chambers. Following James Garcia will be Helen Wayland-Bashaw and then Mark Berry.
Hello, councilmembers. I'm James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. I'm here tonight to challenge the developer agreement between Elliott Homes, Inc. and the County of Sacramento and by right, the city of Rancho Cordova.
Excuse me. That's going to be on the agenda, so that's not for a public comment at this time.
This is an overall general area. It's not related to only one project that is on the agenda.
I'd ask the city attorney if that's...
Sure. Mr. Garcia, you would be appropriate to bring that up in the logistics center. As you know, on the logistics center project, an underpinning of the city's determination is based upon the existence of the DA, and so that really would be, for tonight's meeting, the most appropriate place to bring up an argument that challenges the overall validity of that development agreement. As you know, the developers claiming a vested right in that project is the basis for their current application.
Okay. I guess I will wait until then. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
Helen Wayland-Bashaw.
Hi, I'm Helen Wayland-Bashaw, and I'm over in the Tiffany area. What I'd like to talk about tonight is, we have a grassroots committee that is working on trying to preserve the last acreage along the American River Parkway, keep it natural. And with that said, we were... One of our members, Mark Berry, was awarded Environmentalist of the Year for all the endeavor that our grassroots committee has been doing to try to preserve the American River Parkway as we know it today. What we have is an alleged builder who's going to put housing in there. We are fighting to keep it as-is, to preserve the downstream of the American River, to preserve the environmental on the other side of the river, on the west side of the river, and to preserve the heritage trees that are in that orchard that would also help with climate control, with the emissions of carbon. So with that, I'd like to tell everybody that Mark Berry, one of our members, was voted Environmentalist of the Year. Thank you.
By who?
By the... Was it CERA, Save the American River Association? And we have CERA Club backing it. A lot of people got awards, but Mark was selected as our leader for our group, and he got that award. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Mark. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker. Mark Berry is not here to speak. I have a comment card for him, but he's not here in the audience.
I thought... Did I not see him in the foyer? Mark, are you here? Guess not. Okay, go on to the next speaker.
The next is David Militzer.
David, are you here?
They can hear out there.
I thought I saw him. Go ahead and restart the clock, please.
Thank you. So I'm speaking about the Stone Creek proposal?
Okay, that's item 22, so that wouldn't be a public comment.
So, sorry.
Yeah, you'll want to wait for that, and make sure that you turn in a card for that item to the city clerk. Uh-huh? Next speaker, please.
Those are all the speaker cards I have. I do have a written email that was distributed to the city council and the city clerk's office. It's been... It's from James Garcia. It's on the city's website. It's also been available to the public in the back of the council chambers.
Okay. Looks like we have one commenter on Zoom with a number of 804 to start. That looks familiar.
Yep.
Can we move that speaker into the room, please?
Caller, you have been unmuted, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Hi, everyone. This is Vice Mobile in Lincoln Village. I'm calling to make a comment about two things that are not on the agenda. Item one, the thing I'd like to address is a comment on public comment. I think public comments are important. I think it's important to hear from your residents on the record. I think it's important not to stifle public speech or to make assumptions on what someone's speaking about and try to shut them down. So that's one thing I'd like to say. The second thing I'd like to say is a general comment on planning out the city and an issue that we've had in the past in Lincoln Village of putting light industrial complexes in communities. For example, we were... A proposed project was a 12-building or was it a 15-building light industrial project right across from the Lincoln Village Community Park, between an apartment complex with 175 units in it and in a high school. So in the heart of what I consider the heart of my neighborhood. And the community was very uncomfortable with that project. It's since, I think, been solved, just, you know, on the developer's part, but it was definitely unwelcome, and I'm seeing this same theme play out in other neighborhoods. If you research the CAL Enviro Screen 4.0, it is the latest tool that shows you environmental pollutants and at-risk communities. In mine, Lincoln Village has the highest rate of asthma and heart disease in Rancho Cordova. I don't want to see other neighborhoods end up looking like that in the risk category. We have to plan smartly, and that's all I want to say today. I would like residents to continue to make public comments at their own risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that will move on to council reports. And before we start, I would just remind my colleagues that we probably have a fairly lengthy item today, so if we could keep it somewhat brief, that'd be great. Councilmember Gatewood.
Congratulations to River City Christian, Great Christmas Mall. Amazing to see a church reach out to the community and have an event where they bring poor people or disadvantaged people into the community and give them a Christmas. I met with the SMCT Board, whatever, and that's the Cable Commission, and it used to take seven hours, and now it's like an hour and a half, and so we voted. It's amazing. All the litigation has been solved, and all the people that we sued all paid out what they owed to the community. And last was South Sacramento Conservancy JPA Board, which I think made before our meeting. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'm president of those two boards, and so we voted a new place, and Lynn and I tried to fight to make sure their new office opened in Rancho, but we failed. But they are... It's a great way to help out, so that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Pulipati.
I'd like to say congratulations to Mark Berry for winning Environmentalist of the Year. Also, if you guys have been to the Christmas tree lighting in the Capitol Village, it's near the Capitol Village, it was amazing. Congratulations and many thanks to the Cordova Community Council for putting that up, and I guess that's about it for me.
Councilmember Sander, sorry.
Yes, I attended the League of California, I'm sorry, the Cal Cities, that's the new brand, Cal Cities Board Meeting last week. We have a gigantic ballot measure battle coming this next year. It is something that would severely restrict our ability to do certain types of ordinances and to seek certain types of revenues or compensations for costs that we incur when projects occur within our boundaries. It is probably going to be as big a battle as Cal Cities has seen. It's going to be very expensive. There's a coalition of business and labor and local government officials who are lined up to fight it, so I'm just going to let you know at this point, that's probably going to be something you're going to hear a whole lot about from the league, and I can give you more details later. I attended the Rancho Cordova Symphony d'Or concert at Cordova High School on Saturday night, their Christmas concert, and it was outstanding. It was to a packed house, and I was telling someone earlier today, you know, what was amazing about that concert is it appealed to the nine-month-old who was present. It also appealed to the 90-something-year-olds who were present, and amazingly, there was a 90-year-old on the stage performing as part of our symphony. So it was just a wonderful, all-around concert, a great event, great use of the pack, and like I said, we just about filled the place up. There wasn't any parking available at Cordova High. You had to spill over to go to the park district next door, so who would have thought that when we started this small, little arts enterprise, you know, with the community council and said, hey, go figure out how to do some art shows, that, you know, this would be a result? We have multiple Christmas concerts going on, multiple venues, arts activities, all sorts of creative enterprise going on in our jurisdiction because we thought outside of the box. So congratulations to all those involved, and kudos to the Rancho Cordova Symphony d'Or.
So in addition to the HCP, which was, aside from the location issue, was fairly uneventful, we had a really great two-by-two meeting with two of the county supervisors, Don Natoli and Rich Desmond, and among the issues discussed were three that were really very important to everyone. Mather Veterans Village, our staff is doing a really good job of reaching an agreement with the county on our ability to expand Mather Veterans Village and construct new units for them. The county has pledged to keep the adjacent Mather Community Campus on the front burner. There are improvements that need to be made there because those... A lot of you will remember that those are the old propeller buildings that were the base officers' quarters and the visiting officers' quarters, and they really have not been upgraded very much since then, so... And the landscaping needs addressing, and the people who live there need to be able to take greater pride in the area that they live in. And then finally, the homeless issue on Citrus Road, which is driving the residents at the Mather Mobile Home Park, just bananas, and every time you go by there, it seems like it has mushroomed even more, and it's gotten to be a huge problem. So everyone is looking for a solution on how to get the city and the county to work more on it and really make some progress out there. Like Siri, I went to the Christmas tree lighting, took the husband and the dog, and we really enjoyed it until it got so horribly cold, and then we went home. But the best thing that I participated in this week, city staff helped me to entertain a couple of senior engineering students from Costa Rica. This came to us from one of our contacts that we met during our establishing our sister city with Turi Alba in Costa Rica, and these kids are all going to a technical university in Cartago, which was a city that we visited. They have been here. They arrived Wednesday. They will be here through Thursday, and this were... It was two young men, one of whom graduated on Friday and one of whom was graduating today. They're both engineers. The one graduating today is going to be a civil engineer, but we... They started off their meeting at Saulborn. They were here to study sustainability. So they started off their morning at Saulborn, and then they came over here to City Hall, and our expert in Laurel Bayne, our expert in lead buildings, gave them a tour of City Hall, all about the sustainable features that led to our certification. We then went over to Chili's and had lunch, and the architect, one of the original architects from Capitol Village, met us, and we talked about the design theme and the goals for the design of Capitol Village. And then we had planned a walking tour, but of course, it was pouring, but it worked out because she put us in her car, and we drove around and actually gave them a more thorough tour than we would have had, they would have had otherwise, just by walking around. And then we ended our tour at Sprouts, where the general manager gave us a terrific tour of both the store itself, as well as the behind-the-scenes look at what goes on at Sprouts, and they really enjoyed it thoroughly, took home lots of leftovers from Chili's. And we have a wonderful lady here on staff who translated the entire time. We know these guys spoke a lot of English, but she was able to make it a much richer and more educational experience for them by being able to translate everything that we were saying. So I wrote Cyrus and thanked him for her participation, and we know that these kids are going to have a good time while they're here in this region. That's my report.
Thank you. I'll echo a lot of the same things that we heard with the county two-by-two. We are looking for solutions to Citrus Road. It is not easy because it is public property, and so it is county property at that, so the options available to the city, at least in this situation, are very, very limited. Yeah, the tree lighting was fantastic. I did get to go over to KP International last night, or yesterday afternoon, with the River City Concert Band and conduct the orchestra, which was a very interesting experience, and I was given my ceremonial baton to keep, and if you want to show up to the high school on Sunday, they're going to be doing another concert, and evidently, I'm going to do that again. So it was a lot of fun, and my kids got a kick out of it, and then we shopped at KP International, so it was great. The only other thing, I wanted us to adjourn tonight in the memory of Timothy Fairall. He's the gentleman who was assaulted last week and passed away from his injuries. He, I believe, just turned 60, just retired, and I believe he was Cordova class of 1980, if I remember. I'm trying to remember who... Somebody let me know yesterday, one of his classmates, when I was at KP International, and so our hearts go out to him and his family on this tragic event.
Very sweet.
So with that, I will turn it over to our city manager to see if he has a report.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a brief report that after the two-by-two meeting, several staff members and I had a follow-up meeting with Supervisor Desmond and some county staff and department heads, and we talked about potential solutions to deal with the problem and issues on Citrus Road. We came up with some very good viable options that we will continue coordinating with them and working with them, and I'm hopeful that with the implementation of this plan that we discussed, we should be able to resolve the issue for Citrus Road by next spring. So it will take some time because some solutions do involve some work that we need to do and some shelter space that the county needs to find, but that's the goal and that's the intention, and I received full assurances from the county supervisor and county staff that they will put that in motion with us. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So with that, we'll move on to items 20, which is our consent calendar items. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration. All items will be approved by one motion. Do we have any public comments on the consent calendar?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comments for items on the consent calendar.
Okay, and I'll just give it five seconds here on Zoom if anybody wants to raise their Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Anything to pull, or can we move?
Move approval.
Second.
I have a motion by Sander, a second by Budge. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge. Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Okay. Okay, we're on to item 21, consent public hearing items, and our first, and I guess only, is the residences at Capital Center. And we're turning that over to...
No, just open public hearing.
Oh. We don't have a presentation? Oh, no, it is. I'm sorry, it is. Consent public hearing items, I didn't... I just read "public hearing" in my head. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration. All items will be approved by one motion. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any public comments on this item?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comments for this item.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
So I will move that we find that the environmental determination is adequate and appropriate and that we adopt the resolution for the major design review for the residences at Capital Center Village.
Project.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion by Budge, a second by Pulipati. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Thank you. Well, that will move on to public hearing items. We have one public hearing item tonight, item 22.1, logistics center at Rancho Cordova major design review, and I'm turning this over to Nick. There you are. Hey, Nick. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Terry, members of the council. Darcey Galart with the Planning Department. I'm here with Nick Sosa, Associate Planner, Albert Stricker...
I'd say you're not on my note.
I know.
Or I would have said hi to you, too.
It's a team effort tonight. Albert Stricker, Public Works Director, and Sean Carney, the Transportation Consultant with DKF. Just one moment while we're loading up the presentation. Okay. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to receive a presentation from staff and the project applicant on what has occurred since the July 18th city council meeting. Upon con... Upon conclusion of the presentation and public comment and additional discussion, staff is requesting that the council direct us to return at a later city council meeting with final action documents or direct the applicant to make additional modifications to the proposed project. Before we get into the, the project specifically, I would just want to provide an overview of the villages of Zimfandel Special Planning Area. I know we've discussed this in a few other meetings, including the July 18th, but just as a refresher. So the villages of Zimfandel Special Planning Area was approved by the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors in 2000. So the first aspect of that is the zoning. So what, what, what zoning was established by that? What does it mean? So the first thing is that this SPA document regulates various items. Land use, zoning, density, permitted uses, setbacks, and other development standards. As part of that zoning and how it was laid out in terms of land uses and what's permitted, they took into consideration the proximity of this whole site next to the Mather Airport. The reason being is that the Mather Airport has things such as an overflight zone, a safety zone, and noise contours. So that dictates what uses can be provided on certain properties depending on their proximity to those overflight zones and noise contours. The next aspect is the development agreement. And I'll look to the city attorney to see if he wants to start on, or start in with a few highlights and then he'll close out tonight with some additional information.
Sure. As, as we explained to the community during previous community meetings and whatnot, the development agreements in general are a, an arrangement between, uh, public agencies, cities and counties, and developers. And by which the developers exchange, um, commitments to the projects in some cases that go beyond the commitments that they would have to make if the city were just demanding them or requiring them. And in exchange for that, they get back from, uh, communities that approve development agreements, the certainty that they can proceed with development in accordance with the laws that are in effect when the project's approved. And in general, development agreements are used for projects like, uh, the villages of Zimfandel that are large projects where they are making large commitments in, in planning areas. And they want to know that if they start that work, if they start investing in the community, that they can have the certainty that they'll be able to finish the project based upon the rules that were in effect when they started in general, rather than having those laws potentially change after they started investing and, and opening up those projects. So here, that's what happened. And, um, and in, in general, the development agreement vested the, the laws that were in effect, including the, the villages of Zimfandel specific plan and also, uh, certain design standards that are, uh, attached to and, and part of that. And, um, and those are what now apply to the consideration of the project that's, that's here in front of the council. And, and the, the city isn't able to change those laws that were previously approved for the term of the development agreement.
Thank you, Adam. The image before you on the screen is just the historical land use map that was adopted when the SPA was originally adopted. These numbers on here are, you know, plus or minus estimates in terms of square footage for full build out of each individual land use as well as the various residential dwelling units. This next exhibit depicts how it actually to date has built out. So what we did, and I know it's a little hard to see, but I'll walk you through it, is took the existing, most current aerial image and overlaid that map that you just saw on top of that. So you can see underneath that where the new California National Guard headquarters is located. Uh, the, the few changes I would like to point out for you on this one, specifically since it's been adopted, is on the BP parcel that's on the northwest corner of Zimfandel and Bear Hollow, which would be north of where the new Sprouts is. We actually have approval on that piece, which is well underway for construction, is a 150-unit retirement residence. So just south of that, where the Sprouts is, about three quarters of that property was approved recently for 128 single-family residences as well as 151 multifamily residences. So those are the few changes that have occurred in terms of, um, uses being built on properties such as BP and RC. So the entitlement before you tonight is a design review. So just a little bit of background on a design review. What are the limitations? So we look at consistency with zoning and any previous environmental that has been done and any additional development standards that are in place such as design guidelines. So in this case, um, if you're looking at consistency with codes, whether it's a zoning code or design guidelines, you're looking at stuff such as height, building height size design, internal circulation, vehicular and pedestrian ingress and egress to the site, screening, parking, and lighting. Those are just some of the standards you would be looking at. The next thing that we look at is environmental reviews. For the villages of Zimfandel SPA, um, the county certified an EIR in 1998. And then a supplemental EIR was certified in 2002 to capture some changes that were made to the plan. With that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Nick Sosa.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Nick Sosa, Associate Planner. Uh, just to give a little background on the project location, the property is shown here with the, the star there at the intersection of Bear Hollow Drive and North Mather. It's directly adjacent to the California National Guard Headquarters, uh, to the west. And across Bear Hollow, currently shown as vacant, is also a pending warehouse project currently under review. To the south is the, the Mather Airfold, Air Base. So since the July 18th council meeting, the applicant did have an open house neighborhood meeting on September 7th to get additional feedback from residents. Uh, also since the July 18th meeting, staff has gathered over 75 emails that have been sent throughout the lifetime of the project and created a FAQ page, which was included as part of the council package. And this was to respond to a lot of the common questions that we've been receiving throughout the project. In addition, staff had also been working with the applicant as well as a, a traffic consultant to respond to traffic-related questions. And Public Works will be providing additional information on their results as part of this presentation. So as part of the project's continued review, uh, staff has gathered applicable design, design standards from the villages of Zimfandel Special Planning Area. These design standards are applicable to non-residential projects within the planning area. Uh, these standards include design elements such as building massing, design compatibility, building articulation, avoidance of long flat surfaces, and variation of shapes and colors are just to, to name a few. Again, these standards are provided from the villages of Zimfandel Special Planning Area and will be utilized in review of the project. So now I will turn it over to the applicant to discuss the project in further detail and some of the modifications that they've made since the July 18th meeting.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for having us tonight.
Make sure to state your name for the record, please.
My name is George Condon. I work for Dermody Properties.
Thank you.
Flip to the next slide. Okay. So I won't spend a lot of time on each of these slides. I'll just highlight what I think is important about them. So this slide just shows the timeline for this, um, design review process. And, um, in total, it's been about 13 months since we did our first submittal. Of course, we spent some time in advance of that, uh, with staff to come up with something that we thought would be a good first submittal. You know, it's fair to say that the project's been through a very thorough and thoughtful design review process. We're very happy with the outcome. We appreciate, um, all of the comments we've received from you all and staff and the community. And we've done our best to, um, fold those comments into, or to address those comments in the design of the project. Purpose of this slide here is just to show the standard of development that Dermody Properties, uh, follows. This is something you would see more in a office building, especially, um, a state of California building. But for, um, industrial buildings, um, we, um, designed to what are the highest standards for environmentally conscious buildings. And I think the most important, um, bubble you see on that diagram is at the three o'clock, um, position, the LEED standards. LEED is, um, the, kind of the gold standard of certification for environmentally conscious design. Our buildings are designed to meet LEED standards. And once we, uh, tenant the building, uh, we then apply for, um, the appropriate certification from LEED. All right. For this slide, actually, I'm going to have our attorney speak to the development agreement. So I'll step aside for a second.
Hello, council members. My name's Art Kuhn. I'm an attorney with Miller Star Regalia, represent the applicant Dermody. Our office is in Walnut Creek. I only have a few points to make about the development agreement tonight. I think your city attorney has handled it well. I think the staff report analyzes the issues correctly, as far as the staff report goes. As my law professor back at UC Davis told me, a contract is a promise that the courts will enforce. And the development agreement here is an enforceable contract between Dermody and the city, conferring vested rights on Dermody and legally binding and enforceable on both parties, like any contract. It sets forth numerous non-exclusive remedies and contains a covenant of good faith and fair dealing. The staff report at page two correctly states that only city standards that don't prevent development to the uses, density, and intensity of the Zimfandel specific planning area and county code of 20, of 2003, and that don't negatively impact the timing of the project can be applied to the project. This is fully consistent with the points that I made in the letter that I sent on November 29th, 2022, which points include the project's use and intensity of use, including the maximum 40-foot height limit, are all set by the specific plan, uh, area zoning. The development agreement also provides very clearly that subsequent approvals shall not prevent, condition, or restrict development to intensity below that set forth in the Zimfandel specific planning agreement. There's just a few more observations I'd like to make about the staff report and the DA. First, the only provision in the Zimfandel specific planning area, providing for a lesser 24-foot maximum height, only applies to projects that are contiguous to or within 100 feet of residentially or agriculturally zoned areas. Therefore, it doesn't apply to this project. The staff report at page five confirms that this project is 930 feet from the nearest residential neighborhood to the east and 790 feet from the nearest residential neighborhood to the north. The second point I'd like to make about the staff report at page two is it confirms the project is surrounded, not by residential, but by office and industrial uses. And at page five, the staff report confirms that the project's proposed 39-foot maximum height, which is below the objective development intensity standard of 40 feet, is fully consistent with or even shorter than neighboring buildings, including the California National Guard Headquarters at 39 feet and the Bolden Beauty Building at 37 feet to 46 and almost 46 and a half feet. I'd just like to close by saying that we ask that you honor the development agreement and not use the design review process and the limited discretion that the city has there and under SEQA to reduce what is a very objective development intensity standard or any of the density, intensity standards for this project, which fully complies with them and has the vested right to develop to those standards. Thank you.
Thanks, Art. Okay, so as staff mentioned, we did hold, um, an open house, um, uh, here in this building. And, uh, the purpose of the open house was to, um, have our two architects. So the open house was for both the subject project and then a future project over on Zimfandel, referred to as Stone Creek. And, um, so we had each architect for their respective project there, each landscape architect. And, um, they stationed booths and fielded questions, um, listened to concerns from community members. It was a well-attended event and, uh, we, we learned a lot in that process. You can see there on the second picture, we also set up, um, images of the various trees that the landscape architects for both projects chose, um, to include in the landscaping plans. And then we allowed, uh, folks to vote on their favorite tree. You'll, or trees. You'll, you'll see the, um, kind of the, I'll say unscientific result of, of that. But it did cause us to pivot away from, uh, two types of trees in particular. And then lastly, we set up stations where people could vote on the color palettes. And so we included the color palette that you all have seen for the logistics center at Stone Creek. We included the subject buildings color palette, of course. And then we, um, picked slightly warmer tones, um, uh, than the ones being shown to you tonight. It's more of a color palette we use, um, in, um, Reno and Las Vegas where the desert colors just work better with warmer tones. And, um, I'm happy to say that, um, the, the, both the color palette for Stone Creek and the subject building got the most votes. The, um, the color palette for the one at Stone Creek got slightly more votes, but again, in a very unscientific way, I'm just going to call it an even split. And so, um, uh, this is the, um, the design that you've seen before, but redesigned, um, several times. So what you'll see on this slide here, and it's really noted on the left-hand side, is that when we first presented this project to you all, it had a consistent parapet. Parapet being the, the top of the, of the panel itself. And it formed a straight line. That didn't get such good reviews. And so we've now altered that. Some are 38 feet tall, some are 39. I think some are close to 40, a little bit under 40 feet. But you'll see more rhythm, um, to the building, uh, parapet line. We also added that dark gray tone you see there to provide a little bit more, um, depth to the building design. I believe it was, uh, councilmember Sander asked, uh, for more horizontal elements. So we've included an awning system at the entries to try and create that, um, that horizontal connection with the site. You may recall, we talked about the screen walls that screened the truck court. They, um, were, um, anywhere from 12 to 10 feet. Again, staggering those, we've made them all 12 feet at this point to, um, to ensure the screening of the trailers. We've added some vertical, um, window elements to the design. And as I noted, we kept the color palette the same based on the feedback we got at the, uh, open house. This slide here is showing you just, um, what the landscaping plan will look like at planting and then at maturity. You all recall that, um, there was, um, a request, uh, to use larger trees. We've done that. Overall, there may be fewer trees, um, but when you go with the larger trees, you don't want to crowd them. That's not good for the health of the tree in the long run. But I think the, uh, the landscaping, revised landscaping plan is going to be quite nice. You will see, I noticed this, um, before I came here too, and it'll be corrected. But in the image on the lower left-hand quadrant, you'll see a screen wall that's still at 10 feet. That will be raised to 12 feet, so it won't be staggered. This slide shows you, um, the, uh, the voting that happened as far as the trees go. The dots represent, each dot represents a vote. The, um, the net result of this is that, as I said, there were, um, two types of trees, eucalyptus and pine, that did not really have any significant community support. And so we've swapped those trees out, uh, for the diodar cedar, the... And so we've swapped those trees out for the diodar cedar, the live oak, the incense cedar, and the California live oak. I'm going to, well, let me keep going here for a second. So the other great concern we've heard from the, from you all and from staff and the community is traffic on Bear Hollow, specifically north of the subject site. And so one of the things we did is, you don't see it here in the image, but you'll see the wording where it says adjusted the angle of the driveway for a right turn only. So as a truck is exiting, that driveway bends to the right, making it very difficult for a truck to make a left-hand turn and head north on Bear Hollow. Conversely, a truck coming down Bear Hollow is not going to be able to make that right-hand turn into the truck court. We believe most, if not all, of the trucks, truck drivers will come down Zinfandel, turn on Mather, turn on Bear Hollow, and then turn into this angled driveway to get into the truck court. But the angled driveway discourages people from coming, again, using Bear Hollow to the north in any, in any direction. The other thing that we did, and I'm not sure who to credit this idea with, I believe it was Public Works came up with this idea, but we're going to add a median system, I should say medians, on Bear Hollow and on, well, on Bear Hollow principally, so that when automobiles come down north Mather, you'll see a solid line in the center of the street. They cannot turn left into the auto court. So they're going to have to go straight on Mather and then turn right into that driveway entrance you see there in the middle of the, of the project. Just another idea to keep, keep automobiles off of Bear Hollow as much as possible. You'll note as well that we're going to sign the property, telling truck drivers that it's a right turn only when leaving the project, and then we will sign the property to restrict idling times to three minutes. I'm just going to ask, Albert, do you want to address this, or do you want me to go into these measures here?
I'll be addressing it in detail later during my portion of the presentation.
I'm going to skip these slides then. And then, as noted, we took a look at the buildings neighboring the subject property, and we believe that our massing, the massing of the building, the heights of the building are consistent with the buildings, in the existing buildings in the neighborhood. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you again. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you, George. So with that, I will turn it over to Albert to discuss the additional traffic analysis his team has been working on for the area.
Thank you, Nick, and good evening, Mayor Terry and members of the council, Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And staff has performed a detailed analysis of the 2002 EIR and the traffic studies that were associated with that, as well as existing project-specific traffic studies. Staff have also used the most current traffic models to evaluate both existing and future conditions through independent study of the traffic generations related to that. Specifically this evening, we'll be discussing regional traffic projections and models. We'll talk about traffic effects of proposed developments, conformance with the special planning area, maintenance impacts of truck traffic, and conditions of approval. And with that, I'm going to introduce Sean Carney with DKS Associates. Sean is a transportation engineer that is going to be giving us the technical background on, on these items.
Thanks, Albert. So to start with this presentation, we're going to start at the highest level in describing the area and then get down to more specifics related to this project. So as was mentioned previously, we reviewed what the travel demand models are showing now versus what was shown in 2002. There's been 20 years' worth of refinements on the regional travel demand models, which means that those results have obviously changed over time. In particular, travel patterns have changed in response to both technology and world events. As an example, you see a lot more Amazon delivery and that sort of thing versus driving out to individual retail stores, which results in shifts in travel patterns versus what was projected back in 2002. Additionally, regional buildout totals are significantly less now than they were 20 years ago. What this resulted from is the 2008 housing crisis and financial collapse. Those, the effects of that were that generally across the entire Secog region, buildout development totals were reduced after that occurrence, and thus, the 2002 study would have overestimated the total traffic on roadways in this area. When we get down to individual traffic generation, the villages of Zinfandel Special Planning Area primarily consisted of housing, office, retail, and light industrial uses. Housing, office, and retail generally generate similar levels of traffic. Retail and office are slightly higher than housing, and those three uses are generally about twice the total trip generation of light industrial uses. Housing, office, and retail are all primarily passenger vehicle trip generators, with little to no daily truck trip generation. By comparison, light industrial trip generators are between 10 and 20% trucks, depending on the specific tenant and usage of the site, but they do generate both passenger vehicle trips in employees of the site as well as truck trips. And then with all of that being said, light industrial uses do generate less total traffic than similar square footage of office uses. Next, we get into some comparisons about how the area has developed and background for the villages of Zinfandel compared to what was projected in 2002. The first column here shows what's existing on the ground today, development-wise. The second column shows the current pending and approved developments within the special planning area. And finally, the third column is a rough estimation based on the remaining vacant parcels for what could potentially be built in this area based on the zoning. Our fourth column is a summation of those first three, which would be a proxy for what the new buildout totals would be in this area where this study to be redone today. So what you see in comparison with the fifth column, which is our 2002 land use totals, housing units have gone up, retail has gone down, office has been built at a significantly lower density than what was originally planned, and light industrial uses are about 20% less than what was projected back in 2002. As was mentioned earlier in the presentation, the reduction in retail and service uses and the increase in housing uses are the zoning changes that have occurred more recently. The punchline to all of this is that there is sufficient roadway capacity for further development in this area. The regional traffic models in 2002 were projected to be higher than what we are showing currently. The traffic generation of developments coming in is lower than the assumptions that were made in the EIR documents. The actual development being realized within the special planning area is less dense and lower than what was planned for in 2002, and the roadways were built to accommodate the traffic based on those projections from 2002. The combination of all of these previous effects, as mentioned, would result in lower trip generation, and thus, there is sufficient roadway capacity for these developments. The one exception to that being up at US 50, where there are existing congestion issues, and that is expected to go forward into the future. But the combination of all of these effects means that that congestion issue at US 50 is less now than what it would have been projected back in 2002. Getting into the Bear Hollow Logistics Center specifically, that development is proposing roughly 155,000 square feet of light industrial uses. Based on the traffic study that was prepared for that development, they could generate up to 755 daily vehicle trips, with up to 93 of those trips being trucks. These are upper-end limits, and depending on the specific tenant in use, those numbers could be significantly lower. Finally, based on the findings of that traffic study that was put together, the existing roadways were built with sufficient capacity to support this development, and the traffic generated is consistent with the 2002 supplemental EIR. Finally, we go over into pavement maintenance. So roadways are generally designed with truck traffic and weathering effects in mind. Truck traffic is the primary way that roads are degraded, and generally, the truck trips from light industrial developments will reduce the overall pavement design life. The developer will be required to contribute their fair share to those maintenance costs. And now I'll turn it back over to Albert to talk about the conditions of approval.
Thank you, Sean. Were the project to move forward, we would recommend conditions be placed on the project. The first of those is that the trucks would only be permitted to use designated truck routes. And one example of those truck routes, as conditioned, they would only be able to utilize North Mather Boulevard and heading to Zinfandel Drive and 50, or alternatively, take North Mather Boulevard to Mather-Fumoyer International, then Mather Field Road to access US 50. In addition, as Sean mentioned, they would be annexed into a maintenance district to pay, pay their fair share of maintenance. We also recommend conditions of approval to include bulbouts at three locations, those being Auburnot, Robola, and Air Park. The bulbouts would accomplish multiple things. They would further deter trucks from going down Bear Hollow Drive. They would also slow down all traffic going through that corridor by narrowing the passage through there. And these bulbouts also provide greater protection for pedestrians on the corridor. They would be installed at those three locations, and their schematics showing what they would look like at Auburnot and Robola, and a similar application would be designed at the Bear Hollow, at the, excuse me, at the Air Park intersection as well.
Actual bulbouts or the little pedestrian safety zones like they have at Sprouts and at Spoto?
These would be really similar to what's installed on Spoto. They would be raised concrete, raised concrete islands.
Right. Okay. And on Bear Hollow up at Sprouts.
That's right.
Yeah.
There's one, correct.
So it's like a speed table, but it's actually a crossing, that sort of design?
No.
Not quite. These are islands similar to what's on Spoto that are close next to the face of curb, and effectively, it narrows the road. However, as you're driving through, it doesn't change the surface of the road, but it does create a narrower crossing for pedestrians, which increases safety. In summary, regional buildout, the regional buildout traffic is projected to be lower than forecasts developed 20 years ago. Development within the special planning area will result in less traffic than was originally planned. Traffic generated by the Logistics Center is in conformance with the EIR, and if the project were to move forward, we recommend the conditions that I just mentioned. And with that, I'll hand it back to Darcy Goulart.
Thank you, Albert. So just to close out, in terms of Project CEQA, it has been determined that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 15183, which are projects consistent with a community plan, general plan, or zoning, where a previous environmental has been done. The proposed project has been reviewed and determined to be in conformity with that previous original certified 1998 EIR, as well as the supplemental 2002, and no further CEQA review is required. So with that, I don't believe we as staff have any additional closing remarks on the project itself. Does the city attorney have anything additional to add? No. So nothing additional to add on the development agreement. So again, just to reiterate what council's potential action is this evening, is staff is looking for a direction from council to return at a later date with final, either final action documents or directing the applicant to make additional modifications to return at a previous, or a later date. And with that, that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Darcy. Let me go ahead first, and we'll open the public hearing for this, and I'll ask if we have any public comment.
Yes. The city clerk's office so far has received 12 speaker cards. We have about 14 written public comments, which I will also acknowledge, and then hands are raised in Zoom.
And I would just remind folks that are in Zoom, now is the time to raise your hand, and we'll take a, we'll make a list of who has their hands raised now, and that will be who is allowed to. Again, if you want to speak on this item and you're in Zoom, please raise your hand now, or hit star nine if you're on a phone.
So we'll start with the speakers in the council chambers. We'll start with Paul Carroll. Following Paul will be Renee Weber. Following Renee Weber will be Greg Mullenberg.
And if I could ask, for those of you that are on deck, or you've heard your name, if you could stand and get close to the, to the dais, that way we can move through this as expeditedly as possible. Go ahead, sir.
Good evening. I'm Paul Carroll. I live in Stone Creek. A number of Stone Creek residents came together to identify our concerns and potential solutions to those concerns. A complete listing of those have been provided as written comments to the Cork, and I believe it's in your packets. I want to focus on the villages of Zinfandel's SPA and the direction it provides. Others will raise concerns about how the design guidelines are or not reflected, and our frustrations with the underlying CEQA review that has not taken place for this project. Due to illness, a number of our members will be commenting by Zoom. A stated goal of the village of the Zinfandel SPA is to, quote, "Foster a sense of community and neighborhood identity within individual neighborhoods while maintaining unity and a cohesive design image." Now unfortunately, the city's not able to maintain a consistent design image with state buildings, two of which were cited by the project. To further quote the intent of the SPA and its design guidelines, it's to ensure that a viable community is created by the development of this project, all the villages of Zinfandel, rather than a series of unrelated residential or commercial subdivisions. For non-residential uses, architecturally, this is described as the staff said. Buildings should maintain a scale comparable with residential neighborhoods. The bulk of building massing generally should be minimized, especially where residential character predominates. Building form should avoid proportional long flat surfaces, and building elevations must be attractively designed on all four sides. When taken together, these four statements are in service of the intent of the design guidelines, to maintain unity and a cohesive design, and this intent is for both residential and non-residential uses. Nothing in the design guidelines state that MP or light industrial land is exempt from this. Dermody's representative stated in April that the Logistics Center design is consistent with what they're doing around the country, and they wanted to make sure the landscaping didn't completely hide that modern image. The Z-Spot design guidelines don't mention national consistency or a modern image. They specifically say a cohesive design image for the villages of Zinfandel. As we've described, buildings maintain a scale comparable with residential neighborhoods. We didn't have the luxury of professional artists, but you can see both the houses and that building are to the same scale. Again, quoting, "Design guidelines were established to ensure a viable community is created rather than a series of unrelated residential or commercial subdivisions." I would ask the developer, what's specific about this project provides a cohesive design element with the rest of the villages? Is there a Tuscan feel to the design, a pedestrian-friendly aspect perhaps, or even undulating landforms found in our lovely parks? What will the residents be proud about this project? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Renee Weber.
Hi. Mine's a little less formal. I didn't write anything up. I work at the elementary school that is within viewing distance of where this project is. I'm a yard duty. I work outdoors, three hours a day minimum. Myself, 400 students and staff will be horrifically impacted by the environmental issues that this building creates, and I myself am very And I myself am very scared for something like that. Not only the exhaust from all of the trucks and things like that, the safety of our students and families that walk in this neighborhood, that love to be able to walk their kids to school every single day. The thought of a child getting hit by a truck is absolutely horrific to me, and enough to make me want to just never see this project happen. So I understand that things are already in process, but when I stand on that playground every single day and the wind blows on me all day long. Every time we come to school, people are like, wow, it's so much colder here. That's because the wind constantly blows in our direction on our campus. So I'm very concerned that there hasn't been really great environmental air quality things going on, because I stand out there every day and could tell you what the air quality is when a airplane has been sitting on the runway for way too long, and now everything smells like jet fuel. It's going to be magnified a million times worse by all of these warehouses that are coming. So I just wanted to offer that human element. I'm less concerned about what the projects look like and the trees and all of that, but as soon as a child gets hit by a truck, we're going to be really sad, like really sad. So thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Greg Mullenberg. Following Greg will be James Garcia. Following James Garcia will be Kate Carroll.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Greg Mullenberg, and a Stone Creek resident. The city of Rancho Cordova has committed itself to climate action plan goals, which include reducing greenhouse gas emissions based on current benchmark data. Are you situation aware? Your own staff member, Stephen Heisler, is drafting the city's climate action plan. The addition, the future addition of off-road construction equipment proposed trucking facilities, not just lodges center, but the rest of the total of eight distribution warehouse trucking facilities with primary traffic on Zinfandel Drive and the VOSPA, does not reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Per the Rancho Cordova draft Climate Action Plan Version 4 drafted or dated November 16, 2022, these distribution warehouses are in direct contradiction, specifically aspect to transportation and trucks. While this land use was part of the development agreement, the levels of acceptable emissions has grown more restrictive as we have come to understand their impacts on the health of members of our community. After all, things do change. As an example, the EIR first approved in 1998, revised in 2002, did not address PM 2.5, that's particulate matter, which may be a rationale for reopening the EIR process. Particulate matter of the size of 2.5 microns is a primary element of diesel particulate matter, DPM, diesel exhaust, which has been identified as a toxic chemical in the state of California. DPM has been shown to be a major risk driver for cancer in urban areas as well as upper respiratory ailments in young children, an aspect, for example, of the recent settlement of the Attorney General of California on behalf of the city of Fontana residents against Duke Reality, dated 6 April 2022. We request an assessment of benchmark air quality and the impact of this project and our proposed warehouse projects before this can proceed. Thank you.
Hello, city council. I'm James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. Talked to you about this earlier. You've changed me to now. So I'm actually here to challenge the developer agreement with Elliott Homes and the county of Sacramento, and by right, the city of Rancho Cordova, relating to the development known as villages of Zinfandel. I've requested the documents pertaining to the development agreement and all annual reviews as part of the process that have been provided with various amendments to the developer agreement and a single review letter from 2014 as the only time the agreement was reviewed. It's supposed to be done annually. Both Elliott and the city of Rancho Cordova have failed to comply with the annual review process, and as such, the DA should be in default. I also asked Price Walker, the Vice President of Development Management from Elliott Homes while at a recent meeting, and he also implied that it's possible that you have not done any of the review process. I've requested further confirmation, and the city was again confirmed that all the documents were provided, and the single review letter was all that has been done. Since both parties are in default here and failing to follow the annual review, then both parties should agree the DA is null and void. As such, any previously vested rights sold to others would also now need to be null and voided as they should not have been allowed to be passed down to a new owner. Another reason the DA should be null and voided is due to improper build out of the land to preserve homes' values and health concerns as seen in Section 112-140 of the county code. Section C, subitem 4, will not be detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of persons residing in the immediate area, nor be detrimental or injurious to the property or persons of the general neighborhood or to the general welfare of the residents of the county as a whole. Subsection 5 will not adversely affect the orderly development of property or the preservation of property values. Not only did the developer fail to build the light industrial and business professional zoned areas prior to the surrounding residential homes, the developers trying to construct large warehouses which bring forth increased diesel truck traffic, which is a known leading cause of health issues from the pollutants they release. Both areas are additional reasons for the DA to be null and voided. Utilizing an outdated EIR that doesn't account for new information about air quality and diesel particulate matter does not exempt it from having a significant effect on the well-being of the residents living in the surrounding areas, and thus should be grounds to further review of the SEQA. Consult with the California Air Resources Board and get their expert opinion on the nature of what happens when you bring in warehouses near residential homes, and see you will still consider this to be SEQA exempt.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Kate Carroll.
Okay. Hi, I'm Kate Carroll from Stone Creek, and thank you to the council and the mayor for having, letting me speak tonight. I've spoken before, obviously. My earlier career as a training manager for Jones &amp; Stokes, an environmental consulting company here in Sacramento, helped me become familiar with the California Environmental Quality Act, in particular, SEQA's intent, and I quote, "To alert government officials and the public to a project's potential significant environmental effects before the project and its effects become irreversible." And I quote from, I quoted that directly from the SEQA textbook, which outlines how to comply with SEQA. The state of California under SEQA provides lead agencies certain standards in form of initial study questionnaires to begin the process of evaluating significant impacts on the environment. It is apparent to us, the residents of Stone Creek, that of the 18 topics, topic areas on that checklist, five of them are pertinent to the development that we're talking about tonight and to the other warehouses that are being proposed. Additionally, a sixth topic has been included focusing on cumulative impacts. After attending the city's SEQA overview for incoming planning commissioners, I began to wonder whether the checklist for the lodges center was even done. After completing two public record requests plus some additional follow-ups focusing on lodges center, the staff is working to get one request filled. In regards to the request for that initial SEQA checklist from public records, I was informed it does not exist. Explanation for that continues to be that SEQA, that projects are SEQA exempt because the Zinfandel Special Planning Area is covered by the EIR completed in 2002 and therefore provides projects exemption from SEQA. I respectfully ask how planning decisions can be made in 2022 guided by a 19-year-old document that does not take into consideration the conditions that have changed since then. Since we as residents, the public, have not been able to review environmental documents such as the initial checklist, we have now submitted a request for all environmental records relevant to the parcel of land that the lodges center is proposed for. As members of this community, we have a right under the Brown Act to see and respond to those documents. Due to the time it takes to receive and review those documents, we believe a three-month timeframe be allowed for us, the public, to review and respond. Thank you very much.
Thanks. The next speaker is Troy Fennell. Following Troy will be Valerie Nipschild. Following Valerie will be Eric Weiniger.
Good evening. My name is Troy Fennell. I'm a resident of Stone Creek since 2006. One of the principles of SEQA is that projects that have a cumulative effect on the environment need to be considered as a whole, not as individual parts or single projects. For us as the residents and constituents, the need to study the cumulative effects of potentially nine huge distribution-style warehouses in Stone Creek is not being taken seriously. The solutions below are essential for ensuring the health and safety of our families and of our residential area. There was a lawsuit in the state of California versus city of Fontana. It was noted, in order to accurately assess the significance of changes to the environmental a project might cause, SEQA requires that the lead agency treat the existing conditions on the ground as an environmental baseline against which the significance of a project's impacts to the environment are measured. It is well-established that the significance of a project's effects depends on the environmental setting in which it occurs. The existing building, the existing built environment and presence of human beings, both lacking at the time of ZSP's EIR, are both integral parts of this environmental setting and must be considered in any analysis of the project's impact. An agency is required to find that a project may have significant effect on the environment if, among other things, the environmental effects of a project will cause substantial adverse effects on human beings, either directly or indirectly. In making a determination regarding the significance of a project's impacts, lead agencies, the city of Rancho Cordova, must therefore take special care to describe the presence of impacted communities and sources of pollutions beside the project. Title 14 of the California Code of Regulations, specifically Sections 15255, 15130, and 15065. Section 15255 defines cumulative impacts as two or more impacts that when considered together, compound environmental impacts. Sections 15130 and 15065 elaborate that the project has a significant cumulative impact when a project's incremental addition to environmental impacts from past, current, and reasonably probable future projects is cumulatively considered. Significant cumulative impacts can result from the incremental effects of many projects that may not individually have significant environmental impact. As impacted residents and your constituents, the need to study the cumulative effects of potentially nine huge distribution-style warehouses in Stone Creek is not being taken seriously. Given this project and three more projects under review.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Valerie, and I live in Stone Creek. And I've lived in Rancho Cordova since 1972. Bear with me, I have laryngitis. Warehouse facility, if this project is to go through, warehouse facilities inevitably bring truck and passenger traffic, car traffic. Truck traffic can present a substantially, a substantial safety issue. Collisions with heavy trucks are especially dangerous for passenger cars, motorcycles, bicycles, and pedestrians. These concerns can be even greater if truck traffic passes through residential areas, school zones, or other places where pedestrians are common, and extra caution is warranted. The solutions that I request? The developers and tenants will subsidize the city for a permanent 24/7 traffic code enforcement officer to maintain safety in the warehouse corridor and surrounding areas. Construct new and improved sidewalks, bicycle lanes, and crosswalks. Add new traffic control and safety measures, speed bumps, speed limits, or traffic signs, or signals, or roundabouts. North Mather, currently classified as a collector road, needs to be upgraded as to a thoroughfare. Construction specs before warehouses are operational and used as their primary roadway. The required signage? No traffic, no truck traffic from 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Fire letters will be cited immediately. Company and driver will be fined. These signs should be posted every 40 feet northbound and southbound on Zinfandel between Douglas and International Drive. No overnight parking, sleeping, or camping. Fire letters will be asked to move immediately, and company and driver will be fined. Signs to be posted in the facility and off-site along the surface streets. The hired security that the developers will subsidize the city for will cite these trucks and drivers and company with the above infractions. All signs should be printed in English and Spanish, be readily visible from truck cabs, and posted at prominent locations in all parking areas. Signs shall not be blocked or obscured by the trucks parked on the site. Signs shall be placed near the truck docks and on interior walls that are visible from the truck docking, including approximately every 40 feet along the boundary walls in trucking parking areas.
Your time is up. Next speaker is Eric Weiniger. Following Eric will be Dilup Nayak.
Good evening, everyone. First thing, I just kind of wanted, was wondering, how is it, what do I need to do to get 20 minutes uninterrupted instead of the three minutes that we're limited to? Just kind of wondering, because the developer had that much time, but we don't. I know we get lots of three-minute things, but we need the time to fully develop a topic. With that said, I want to relate three main questions that relate to the warehouse development projects, the cumulative effects that are under consideration. First question is, and this is kind of a head versus heart kind of situation that I'm addressing here. We've talked a lot, we've talked a lot about the head part, the quantitative elements. This is more about the heart. What are we all about here in this community? First question then is, what is home? Is home a concept, a place, or a state of mind? Is it a physical building? The streets around that building where we walk are dogs, where our kids ride their bikes and walk to school? Is it our neighborhood or our city? It's all of these things and more. But is it limited to 500 or 1,000 feet from any proposed development? I say no. Does the feeling of home include buildings two to three times the height of our homes right next to us with 1,000 trucks a day on our streets? Does that mean home? Maybe in the old Rancho Cordova, but not in the new one, I'm hoping. So the question to you all is this. Will you protect our city, our neighborhood, and our homes? Second question, what is representation? The word obviously means action on behalf of a group and representation by delegates to have a voice in government. That's you all, right? A related term is stewardship, which is an ethic of responsible planning and management of resources. Elected officials are stewards over the resources in a community. In December 1773, the historic Boston Tea Party that played a large role in our country's independence was based on the motto, "No taxation without representation." Well, now I think we have a new model. No imposition without representation. That is, no imposition of changes to our community and our homes without representing our views. Our entire political system is based on that concept of representation of the community's voice. Stewardship is more than checking boxes. It's protecting the health and values of the community that you represent. Will you be a steward to our community? Will you represent the views and desires of us, the community? Last question, do you want your legacy to be the degradation of our neighborhood to violate a key city? violate a key city value of, as cited in your general plan, quote, "having a place in the region as a vibrant destination," and, quote, "making Rancho Cordova a desirable place to live, work, and play"? Rancho Cordova used to be disparaged by the entire region. Do we want to return to that? I don't think so. But with Dermody putting a gun to your head with their latest legal threat letter, I have to ask, how will you respond? I can't address specific legal arguments, but for every argument, there is certainly an opposing argument. Please pay attention to our voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Dylup. Following Dylup will be Mark Berry and then Brenda Guston.
Thank you, council members. Thank you, Mayor, for giving me an opportunity to speak here. I live in the Stone Creek Development for the past 17 years, close to the North Mather Boulevard. The concern I have is having such a big warehouse with so many truck and amount of traffic that lad so close to the school, the Navigator School where my daughter went to study, and having so much of traffic close to the park. Again, I'm not overly concerned about the look and feel of the warehouse, how many trees do you plant, what kind of trees, but main concern is having the warehouse and the truck traffic so close to the school and the parks. So I would request you to act responsibly. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name's Mark Berry. I'm from the Tiffany Farms Community. I had the opportunity to read the December 5, 2022, I guess, major design review with regard to the logistics center. And in reviewing that document, I know several things came to mind. It states that the development agreement solidified all regulations and development standards at that time in 2003 to be applicable within the Village of Zinfandel specific plan. And when, in doing a little bit of research and looking at what was involved with that development agreement, in 2014, the city of Rancho Cordova has a letter here with reference to compliance review, and it says that due to the long history of the project, beginning with the county of Sacramento originally approving the project, and the city of Rancho Cordova inheriting the project in incorporation, compliance documents have been lost in transition between the jurisdictions. So, you know, trying to figure out what really is involved with this development agreement, it seems like the base documents associated with it and what it means are no longer available. Furthermore, this memorandum in 2022 in December states that the Village of Zinfandel specific plan and the 2003 Sacramento County zoning codes were the applicable documents and continue to be the regulatory documents. And so sort of in reviewing the intent of the Zinfandel specific plan, the intent is for, you know, mixed land use development that shall meet the guidelines and standards that seek to encourage bicycle and pedestrian access between employment, commercial, residential, and public use. The idea is definitely a community, industrial, office, and commercial development that complements each other. Subdivision D improves the job-housing balance. Subdivision G establishes commercial uses that are designed for the convenient pedestrian access and enhance the visual character of the community. So, you know, what we know here is proposed is sort of a warehouse complex, this first project being sort of a precedent for what follows. So another thing this memorandum states is that, so in 2003, we took a look at the Sacramento County zoning code that's supposed to be the applicable document associated with that. You know, I was here and my property in 2000, 2002 moved here.
Your time is up.
I don't remember a big warehouse complex likes of being proposed here, and that, I also see no definition really of a warehouse in that 2003 document that is consistent with what's being proposed here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Brenda Guston. Following Brenda will be Helen Wayland-Bashaw, followed by Hader Bizwig.
Good evening. So just here to represent our friends in Stone Creek, who 19 years ago, some of them came into Stone Creek, which was a very, very different place than it is now. The development was in its infancy. There were a few homes, few people, fewer cars, minimal traffic on Zinfandel. Certainly, those just moving to the area had no idea that huge 650 by 310 by 40-foot-tall warehouses would be considered so close to this community. And as far as we can tell, were not informed by the developer at that time, Elliot Holmes. In 2002, when an EIR was certified for the villages of Zinfandel, much less was known about the health effects of a particulate matter from diesel exhaust or the health effects of noise and light pollution. In your role as stewards of this community, I ask that you support the previous request to give three months' time for citizens to review, to receive, and review environmental documents relative to this project. This time allotment allows for you, the council, and the public to be better informed on the environmental effects that were studied and reported on, or that still need study, as SEQA indicates. And I wanted to indicate that, for those who don't know, because some don't, SEQA means California Environmental Quality Act. With Rancho Cordova being an area that is visited by 8 million people who visit the crown jewel of the American River, and we are part of the city of trees, and we're working with the climate actions, so many things have changed in 20 years. So it seems to me that we really need to collaborate with each other and decide, what is it that we want for Rancho Cordova? Do we want to be a place that is a distribution place that doesn't listen to the citizens here being impacted by so many trucks? Thank you very much for listening.
Hi. I'm Helen Wayland-Bashaw. I'm here to support the folks over in the Stone Creek area, because I think it's about time the city of Rancho Cordova really look at the rules and regulations and comply with them. We've been awarded the notice for being friendly to contractors. About time you be friendly to your own citizens and go with what the citizens want. What I noticed in all the briefings I've attended is, these briefings were alleged a item that the people could give input for, but they were directed and focused so that we had really no input. We picked trees that they had picked up. It wasn't really a thing where what people said was actually taken by the builder. Many issues dealing with the carbon emissions hasn't been addressed, or the wind tunnel. When questioned by, when someone questioned the builder, who is coming into this? They don't have a person in there. So are we going to have a white elephant sitting out there that's not going to be occupied, or it's going to be occupied with a lot of carbon emissions, a lot of noise? It's going to deteriorate the value of the homes in the area. Are the builders going to compensate the current owners of every one of the houses that is in this area for the depreciation value of their homes? These are really critical things to the home builders, because everyone knows, you put a monster out there, it's going to detract from the value of every home that's near there. So it's just not going to provide an aesthetic view. It is going to affect the schools. The builder didn't take in consideration the wind tunnel it was going to create because of the way the wind blows through the area. You said you're putting all these alleged areas to calm the traffic in the area. One child gets injured, it's a slap in the face for Rancho Cordova. We know that area is highly traveled by children and parents. So I don't think you've really taken in consideration the aesthetic view, the deterioration of the value of the homes in the area, or the real safety and well-being of our children. Thank you.
Did I pronounce that correctly? H-A-I-D-E-R?
Doesn't sound like we have a taker. Let's go on to the next.
Next person is Barbara. Barbara Crow...
Kropaczek.
Thank you. Kropaczek.
Hi, so my name is Barbara Kropaczek, and I've been a homeowner in Stone Creek since 2005. I've got nothing against the builder. I know that they're trying, but we just don't want their project in our neighborhood. We don't want any more of these warehouses. The residents here don't want these projects. The wonderful residents behind me, on the phone, and in past meetings have already stated all the impacts, all the reasons why not to build these warehouses. But are you listening? Do you even care? Would you care more if this was happening to your neighborhood? Would you care more if one of your children was hit by one of the trucks coming from these warehouses? Or was breathing the air that's going to be happening now with all of the additional traffic? The DA should have never been written the way it was. The area should have never been planned out the way it was. And since the city attorney is unwilling to do anything about the DA, then the city council, buy the land back. And let's stop having these discussions. There's funds from home sales and property tax. Buy it back and let it be. Stone Creek is a gem in Rancho Cordova. Don't turn it into a lump of coal in all our stockings. Thank you.
Mayor Terry, those are all the speaker cards that I have. I'm going to go ahead and read off the public comment that we've received via email.
Let's take public comment for Zoom first, then we'll do emails.
Sure.
So it looks like we have three commenters. We'll start with Jennifer Garcia, then Sarah Malone, and then I believe that's FISA's phone. So those will be the three commenters from Zoom.
Jennifer, I've unmuted you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Hi, Jennifer. Go ahead. Jennifer, it looks like you just muted yourself. Jennifer, can you hear us? Looks like you're still muted. Looks like you're unmuted now, but we still can't hear you. Nope, actually, it looks like she dropped completely. Let's move to Sarah Malone.
Just a second. I think she just got moved over to a panelist.
Who?
Jennifer Garcia. Hold on, I'm going to move her back.
I see her as a panelist in here.
Yeah, I just moved her back. Jennifer, I've just unmuted you. You'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Great. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can. Go ahead.
I apologize. Hopefully you can understand me. I have a cold, so I apologize for that. Just, I'm not sure if you're aware or not, but I believe that there is a study that has come out from the Attorney General that recommends distance of warehouse projects for residential homes to be more than 1,000 feet minimum, not just that the fact that it's not adjacent. And then, as a mother who drives that road every day, I would like to just second the voices that have been said about the safety of the children. If you drive up and down that road every day, like I do, twice a day, you'll see since Bold &amp; Beauty's been built and the other lot that's been built that is sitting vacant still, we have encountered a lot more trash, a lot more homeless people in that area. And I'm just really wondering if that is what you guys want for Rancho Cordova, to become an industrial city instead of what it is. I think Rancho is starting to build back its reputation as a place to live for families, but I know several families that are moving out because they are unhappy with Rancho and what is becoming, especially with the warehouses and everything coming in. I'd also like to point out that I believe in January of 2023, there is a law that is going to take effect that you also have to have electric vehicle charging stations. So if the council does move forward with this, I'd maybe invite the council to impose that the trucks coming in have to have, be electric vehicles, and since that's the way the state is also going, this is just really, a lot of residents are upset about it. I back up to one of the projects. I already have asthma and health breathing issues. I just don't want to be breathing that in. So thank you for your time, and I'd really invite the council to listen to its citizens.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Sarah Malone.
Sarah, you've been unmuted, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
So it looks like your line is still muted. So if you're speaking, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
We can. If you could speak up a little bit, that would be really great.
I sure can.
Thank you.
Okay. Earlier, we heard the developer state that they were exempt from SEQA because they conformed to it. I strongly disagree with that. I'm going to speak on noise, which is part of the SEQA environmental checklist. And a warehouse project of this scale and size surrounded by Stone Creek residents that are already overburdened by increased traffic noise and pollution on Zinfandel should be looked at in terms of the impact it will have on all sensitive receptors. The acceptable noise decibel level for a residential neighborhood is 55 decibels, according to the Community and Environmental Defense System. Simple noise models, such as the Distance Attenuation Calculator, indicate it would require a separation distance of 1,600 feet for the 85-decibel noise from idling diesel truck engines to drop to the residential acceptable level of 55 decibels. We, as a community, are seeking equitable solutions from both the applicant and the city that can safeguard our neighborhood. Solution number one: The city shall create and developers shall enforce an ordinance requiring no trucks idling their engines on streets or in the yard. And I did see that they did put the three-minute anti-idling restriction sign in, which was good. The developer and/or city shall build a 10-15 terrace sound wall on either side of Zinfandel where there are homes to buffer the 85-plus-decibel diesel trucks accelerating along Zinfandel. Excuse me. Developer and/or a city shall build a 10-15 terrace sound wall, extending the wall from edge to edge on the residential corner of Barokan-Zinfandel, to buffer the 65 to 95 decibels of a diesel truck accelerating through six to eight gears from North Mather to enter Developers shall enforce no shouting on the facility's yards or other loud means of communications, such as loud speakers. Developers shall enforce no loud music during construction phase or normal operations. Developers shall ensure there are no backup beepers during normal operations. These beepers are 90 to 115 decibels. The developer and the city shall ensure there is no 24/7 operation, no operating between 10:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. during construction or normal operations. Developer and the city shall enforce no garbage collection onsite during weekend hours. And the developer shall provide a posted telephone number for residents to call to report violations of these norse ordinances. And I strongly ask that you please allow the three-month review for the citizens of Stone Creek. Thank you.
Next speaker is telephone number 916-804.
I believe that was FISA. FISA, can you hear us? You should be unmuted. Nope, looks like, FISA, it looks like your line is muted. So there you go. Go ahead.
Hi. Yes, this is indeed FISA in Lincoln Village, and I want to ask, what are we doing here? In, I believe, 2022, a similar situation hit Lincoln Village where we were going to get... where we were going to get a development we didn't want that wasn't healthy. Again, it is not a badge of honor to be in the highest percentile for asthma and heart disease risk in Rancho Cordova. That is an indictment on the city. And I fear for the health of the children in other communities. I don't want to see this model replicated anywhere. There's a reason why the residents are speaking up today and why they're objecting to this project. And it's becoming frustrating on my end. I do small things, what I can do, to reduce my carbon footprint, my GHG emissions. Council member Sandra, today you saw me, with a, coming out of the store, I had a giant jug of laundry detergent. I use half of what I normally do. I'm trying to reduce my use of plastics. I was using public transportation to get around. I advocate for active transportation in Rancho Cordova. I'm doing what I can in small ways to try to make things better. And then I feel like I have zero say and zero control and zero representation on the health of the community. I especially worry for the children and the air quality that we have here. Not all development is good development. And I love Lincoln Village, and I love my community, and I want better for them. I also don't want to see what's happening in Lincoln Village replicated in other places. We want to see improvement, not backtracking. So please take that into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. That was a lot.
Can I go to email public comment?
Yeah, go ahead and do that.
Okay. So those who submitted public comment via email, I'm going to list their names. Their emails have been distributed to the city council and appropriate staff, as well as placed on the city's website and have been printed and are available in the back of the council chambers. First public comment submitted via email was from Marilyn Mitsker. Following Marilyn is Sarah Malone, Dawn Davison, Greg Mylenberg, Eric Weiniger, Kate Carroll, Valerie Nipschild, James Garcia, Marilyn Metzger, Paul Carroll, Sharon Mullenberg, Max Corrales, Eileen Sedilko, and Brenda Guston. Anyone who submitted public comment after the deadline, those emails will also be communicated and sent to the council via email after this meeting.
Thank you. Colleagues, if it's okay, I think we'll take a short break for staff to prepare some responses to what's, and the city attorney. Can we maybe give 10 minutes? Is that okay? Five minutes? What would you guys prefer? 10? Okay, we'll take a 10-minute break. So let's be back here, let's say at 7:40. Okay. Getting back to order. We are still under the public hearing item and still in a public hearing for item 22.1. Colleagues, how would you like to proceed? Do we want to have staff respond to any of the public comments that they've heard?
I think that would be great.
Or any specific questions? So, okay. You want to turn your mic on?
Don't you want to give council an opportunity to ask staff any questions they might have?
If that's what you'd like to do first, go ahead.
That way they can respond to everything at the same time?
Go ahead, Linda, if you'd like to ask some questions.
No, I don't have questions.
Mayor, I have a question. So if the council member has questions, is it separate for staff? And then is it separate for developer or the applicant? How does?
However you would like to proceed.
I might suggest that you ask staff questions first, and then if you have additional questions of the developer, that way it may be that staff answers the questions that you might otherwise have the developer, or you can certainly then call them up if you would like to speak with them afterwards.
I had a question from one of the commenters who said they were seeking some public records from staff. Is that Mrs. Carroll?
I can, I can address that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I would suggest directing questions to staff or to the?
I just wanted to make sure I have that, I captured that correctly, because that, was that, if she'd asked for additional documentation. Okay.
I'll be happy to address that.
Go ahead, Adam.
Let me just start responding overall by reminding the council and everyone that this item is a design review item. The project is not before you as a request to modify the zoning overall. So it is appropriate and important that while there may be very passionate, powerful, and important, meaningful comments you've received on the overall use in this neighborhood, but this is not, on its face, a hearing about whether or not to approve the use, to approve the zoning of this location for warehouse. Rather, it's a project and a discussion that should be focused really on the design issues. That said, it is the case that the design standards vested at the same time as the zoning, that they were approved at the same time as the zoning, that they are arguably equally as important, a vested right, as the zoning is itself. So we do think that you have significant authority and significant rights to carefully review the zoning, the design review standards in that regard. I'm going to comment on one of the public comments that I heard, which was that, the argument by Mr. Garcia that he's made in other council meetings that.
Adam, thank you for everything you said so far. I just want to make sure, serious question was specific to?
I will answer that as well.
Okay, so let's start there, because that wasn't Mr. Garcia's comment.
I understand.
Okay.
I was going to answer that right after Mr. Garcia's. So, but then going ahead. So the city does have a couple Public Records Act requests out for documents about this. The city is in the process of reviewing and responding to those requests for public records. I believe we have fairly voluminous requests and are close to being able to produce those records that the community has requested. We're sorry that we were not able to complete the response to all of those requests before this meeting, but have attempted to do so. So the review and the distribution is well underway. And then finally, back to Mr. Garcia's comment. There's a, there is a section on the annual review of development agreements. And there is not a section in that that says if you don't do the annual review that the DA is void. And certainly, the city makes every effort to do annual DA compliance review processes. We've recently completed a large number of them this year. But there is not something in the DA, in this development agreement, that says not doing that makes the DA void. There actually is a specific provision that even says that the notice that's required to go on annual DA compliance is a notice that goes not to the entire villages of Zinfandel community, but rather, it's a notice that goes to the property owners who are still bound by and subject to the DA. So the individual property owners in the villages of Zinfandel are released from their obligations under the DA. When you buy your individual home, you're no longer a developer who's bound by the terms of the development agreement. And the annual DA compliance process notices only go to those who are still bound by the terms of the DA. So I do think it follows to some extent that even if there were rights around the DA compliance process, those rights wouldn't really be rights that would be enforceable by people who aren't anymore subject to the DA in a formal sense. So it's a process that's designed for developers who are still bound by the DA to have an opportunity to review and sign off on the DA. So I don't think that that, as it's been raised here, is an issue.
Mr. Garcia had another comment where he was quoting from, I think it must have been County Zoning Code, a dated county zoning code, where he was talking about the project would not be injurious to citizens' health, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
I did, I did attempt to note those county code sections to have my staff triple-check them. There is a limited line of case law that deals with a very select set of circumstances under which DAs can be, rather, that vested rights can be unvested. And I'll be happy to double-check those. I did attempt to note those sections to triple-check them before we, you know, come back at the next meeting on this.
There was also a comment by Jennifer Garcia about the Attorney General's study suggesting 1,000-foot separation.
I also noted that. I did.
That was Fontana, I think?
Yeah, I did, I did hear her saying that that was a new standard. So even, it may well be that that's a new standard that the city would attempt to comply with going forward. But if it is a new standard, we probably would not be able to apply it here because of the vested right as to the location of the warehouses here. So it's, I did note that that's something we should look at for other future discretionary projects where we're deciding where to zone warehouses going forward.
So, sorry, Adam. On that, you meant to say, on any of those warehouse locations that have currently been proposed, this 1,000-feet limit will not apply?
So it, again, I'd be happy to look at that. But if the, if the, if the DA is, rather, if the AG is suggesting that, that as a new stand, as a new standard or guide, that in the future, public agencies zone warehouses 1,000 feet away from residential, that guide would be something that you would use if you were doing a new discretionary project that hadn't yet been approved. So for example, a large one being Westboro, or a large one being the, the, the.
For those in the room, he's taught that Westboro would be number two on that map over there on the wall.
Two on that map is a large area where they haven't yet approved a new specific plan and where therefore that, the zoning would not have been vested. The location of, and relationship between warehouses and housing would not have yet already been decided. But again.
So we could include it in our code when we adopt, when we approve the plan for that one. But a lot of the other ones were approved before, is what you're saying.
Yeah, exactly. And, but I did note that is something I didn't specifically address here, but I will double-check to be sure that it's not, that it wouldn't be considered a new state law that would be binding on this project.
Could we also get a synopsis of the Fontana case?
Sure.
So I had a question, and I am definitely not the scientist on this board, but I am, I have served for 10 years on the Air District Board. And the comments around PM 2, I'm guessing that I wasn't an elected official 20 years ago, and I certainly wasn't on the Air District. But as long as I've been on the Air District, we've been monitoring PM 2 and PM 10, which are, PM 10, for those donos, usually the kind of dust you can see. PM 2 is the stuff you can't. Much, much smaller. So there was a commenter about the fact that the CEQA document and the EIR didn't take that into account 20 years ago. Was that not part of the standard then? And I know as new developments come on, that is a, that is a factor that we, that we use. I know we're working on a climate change plan that at some point, I know, is coming back before us. But how does that work in the CEQA process and the fact that that document then, comparatively to what we understand now? What kind of influence does that have?
Sure, I can address that. So the document back then may or may not have fully addressed those types of impacts in today's world. What I can speak to is that the project was routed to Sacramento Air Quality Management District. The comments that we received from them suggested that this project could potentially install electric docking stations at their docks for trucks to plug into, to use for ancillary equipment, such as their freezer refrigeration units, so that when the trucks are turned off, they still have the ability to utilize that part of their equipment.
Without turning on generators.
Without, without turning on generators, without idling. Additionally, they're required to, which is a standard requirement for all projects, adhere to best management practices when talking about particulate emissions, or particulate matter emissions. So those are a standard guidance that all of these types of uses are required to adhere to. A lot of stuff in there does talk about using Title 24 building codes, utilizing non-idling. And we do that a lot through signage. The Air Quality Management District did not impose any additional air quality assessments for this project. They did not request an air quality management plan for this project as well. So in reviewing that letter and reviewing it, utilizing our subject matter experts, that's the guidance that we take moving, you know, when we're looking at this project. And I think we might have some additional comments from Public Works for just overall air emissions.
Speaking specifically with regard to cumulative impacts on traffic, I wanted to add a couple of comments on that. Cumulative impacts were analyzed in the previous environmental documents that were completed in 2002. And in addition, our independent analysis has identified that the total aggregate traffic on cumulative is less than originally a part of that environmental document. That environmental document did identify mitigation. And that mitigation with, that included both roadway and signal improvements and other transportation improvements. Those have been constructed.
Okay. So I had a question about the entry route for trucks and vehicles, but I guess specifically the trucks. Is there any way to have the entry route not be Bear Hollow? Because, I mean.
Bear Hollow's not going to be the entry route.
That's, that's what I thought I understood from the developer's plan of where trucks would enter. They would make a right off of Bear Hollow into the entry point of the facility, correct?
The way it's designed at this.
They'll go right in front of Navigator Elementary.
The way it's designed at this time, trucks would not go on Bear Hollow north of the site.
Bring up the schematic showing where that was? Because I thought, then I must have misread it. Because I was under the impression it would not. And then I got the impression from the presentation that it would. And that that's why we were putting traffic mitigations and bowlouts in front of the school and the park and everything there.
The driveway for the truck is on Bear Hollow on their site. However, they may not, or they shall not go north from the site. They shall.
They won't go, they won't leave the site from there. But will they, will they approach from there? No?
No.
Okay.
They would need to.
Explain it to me again, then.
They would need to arrive to the facility and depart from the facility along those truck routes that are marked in purple there. So leaving the site, they would have to access only from North Mather and either go to US 50 via Zinfandel or go to US 50 via Mather-Famoyer International and Mather Field Road, and approaching the site only on those same truck routes.
That, that's what I understood. I swear, one of those slides really surprised me because, maybe it was just because you showed the traffic mitigation on Bear Hollow that might have been throwing me off.
Yeah, and to be more specific, they would be on Bear Hollow for approximately 200 feet north of North Mather to get to their driveway. But they would be restricted to accessing.
That might have been my confusion.
From North Mather.
I saw the entries of the driveways.
Yes, and their driveway would be designed so that they could only go to and from the south. The trucks would physically not be able to go to the north.
So I have a question for the developer. If he, if they would be open to restricting the route, not through Zinfandel for the exit, the route, not through Zinfandel for the exit, but through Mather to Douglas to Sunrise, and avoiding Zinfandel altogether? Is that anything that the developer would be open to? Sure. Yeah. We're on TV, so we'll need you at the mic.
Go ahead.
This one?
Either one. It just wasn't on.
They should both.
It wasn't on yet.
The answer is no.
Want to expand any more on that? Is there a reason that, I mean, it's a main arterial? I mean, it would probably add a mile or two? Maybe three?
You need to, you need to maintain flexibility in how trucks, well, trucks is the only issue here, are the only issue, how trucks come and go to a site. Zinfandel is a major thoroughfare. It's the logical one that all truck drivers are going to want to traverse. So I just, ruling it out, I don't see how that's even going to be enforceable.
Yeah, just, there's already, there's already a lot of truck traffic that goes through, whether it's auto dismantlers and the pick 'em pull and other things, that are going through Douglas now. We're going to be doing a bunch of improvements on Douglas. And obviously there's way more industrial traffic going up and down Sunrise now already. And I'm just trying to mitigate it here for, for, for these neighbors that have obviously expressed concern. But thanks for the answer.
I think the good news is, is that the Public Works has shown that there's capacity on Zinfandel for the truck traffic from this project.
I understand. Thank you.
Albert, if, if, can you expand the.
Hey, wait, wait, stop. Let's just be respectful, everybody here. You can have a disagreement, but we don't need people yelling or snickering at each other, okay? Let's just try to be respectful. Go ahead, Sarah.
So I appreciate the comments from the residents, and one of the key concerns is safety and security. So is there a way you could show the proximity to the Navigator Elementary School to these routes?
It's right there.
You might have to get the fancy cursor out.
Yeah, yeah.
No, actually, if you go back to that purple, go back to that purple.
We'll get the laser planner, which might not, somebody's got a laser planner.
Right there.
Right there. This is Bear Hollow.
That's the site.
This is National Guard. This is the site. Navigator's up here.
Okay, so it kind of directly impacts the kids that are going to the school. Those are the routes that the kids will be taking as well.
No, no, the school's in the middle. One of these schematics, I swear, I thought I saw that the entry route was on Bear Hollow, and maybe I just thought that that was a straight line coming from Bear Hollow from Zinfandel.
Okay.
But.
It's the purple.
That, that other slide that showed the, the movements of where trucks would come from was what I had understood. But one of these, it looked like it was coming down Bear Hollow, but, which made me think it was going to go in front of the school.
If this is the school, and the trucks will go from here, right? So they don't, this is where the kids will be, and the school, but the trucks will go here or here? Yeah? Okay.
Right.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions for Adam.
Go ahead.
Sort of in the vein of what we heard before. So I told Linda during the break that this was some of the best public testimony we've ever had on an item that I can recall. I just want to congratulate you on that. You weren't hyperbolic. You were on target. You were well-informed, well-spoken, planned. It's probably the best group of commentary I've ever heard on a project. So congratulations on that. It made my note-taking much easier. Adam, there were a lot of comments here that sort of built around a series of things. Renee talked about smells. Greg talked about greenhouse gases. Kate talked about SEQA, and are we, are we missing something in old SEQA versus new? Troy, also SEQA. Dale talked about amount of trucks in the neighborhood. Dillip talked about impacts to the school. Mark talked about, well, I'm going to save that one. Brenda talked about it. Helen made a comment regarding it. Barbara said, you know, find some other way to do this. Sarah talked about noise. I think everything I just listed is sort of not on our agenda tonight, because we're dealing with design review, not underlying project approval. Is that an accurate summary based on how you framed this in the beginning?
Yes, it is in general, and to the, and that a number of those impacts were also within the, the structure of some of the comments you heard from, from Public Works about the impacts that were specifically analyzed. So, so yes, and some of those were specifically addressed in that report.
Mark talked about a warehouse complex and asked, what's the 2003, 2002, 2003 definition of a warehouse? Is that something we've analyzed?
That is, let me address that in a couple ways. The zoning code addresses warehouse. I do think that to some extent, when the developer says the current definition in the industry of what a modern warehouse requires, you aren't necessarily talking about precisely the same things. That in general, contracts are interpreted based upon the meaning of, and the developer's attorney, you know, clearly emphasizes that, that this is a contract and the contract is vested right. And I agree with that fully. But that, when, when a development agreement vests a right, when it vests a law that was in effect, it, it doesn't carry with it the right for the industry definition of what that word means to evolve and for that definition to evolve precisely as the industry's desired definition evolves. So I think that it is, it is noteworthy that, for example, in the developer's letter, they cited a, you know, 2020 thumb rule, thumb guide on the industry of what currently is required for warehouses. I do think what's relevant is what warehouses vested, and the meaning that was approved, when the DA was approved, not that definition as it may or may not evolve over time by their industry.
So this is not warehouse versus no warehouse. This is what is a warehouse in a design context.
In a design context.
Yeah.
At a certain time context.
Right. When it was signed versus now.
That's right.
So can you expand on that? And expand a little bit on what happens when the definition of warehouse changes over 20 years?
We, we end up in challenging situations like we're in now, in part.
Because as.
I don't, I don't mean that tongue-in-cheek, but I.
I understand.
Very simply that, that, so we talked about this a bit at the community meeting, that I would, I would say that the uses allowed in this zoning district that the county placed on and allowed, this BP zoning district, and Darcy can certainly talk about this, and I think you spoke on this quite eloquently at the community meeting, at the workshop meeting, rather, are very broad. And a number of those definitions, a whole bunch of those definitions, are not detailed in defining exactly what that use means. That this is, this is a quite broad, non-residential zoning category. Darcy, would you, you know, agree with that general statement?
Yes, I would agree with that.
And that warehouses, you know, are not exactly defined in that. So I do take some issue, again, with the applicant saying absolutely with certainty, the definition, when we say warehouse in that code from 20 years ago, is precisely the most modern definition of what it means to be a warehouse. And I do think that that reflects some amount of, what, what matters, I think, is that you have a design review standard in front of you. Warehouse clearly means a warehouse use, and it means that you need to be imposing design standards or looking at it from a design perspective on the things that that design review code says you can look at. And that's why we've encouraged you to look at, you know, particular sets of findings. We, again, we don't think that you should be asking yourself, can we have a warehouse or not in this location? We think you can be asking yourself all of the kinds of questions that the, the design review code specifically says, the design review guideline specifically says you should be thinking about. And it doesn't say you only have zoning and you don't have design review. It says you also have design review.
Okay. Because as I've said before, there's at least two of us here tonight who were in those original meetings back in the late 90s and early 2000. And Rancho Cortova's experience with light industrial at that point is characterized by what we have on Kilgore, Trade Center, Sensitor, areas like that. That's what was, that's what was planned.
Yeah, I would, I would say that's what, when this, this project came before us in Corpac in various ways, that's what we would have been thinking.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Even though it's since or subsequently, or in the process, was labeled business and professional, which is really an obfuscation of the reality of it.
And I guess I would, to some extent, for the developer, you know, possibly say that I think the way a vested right works is in some ways a two-way street. That is to say that if, if the meaning of, if the laws that apply are fixed and locked in time, that means they don't also specifically evolve automatically in favor of the developer by the current evolution of the industry standard or understanding. They were, they were fixed in time, and that they're fixed in time for both the agency, and they're fixed in time for the developer also. It's a, it's a two-way arrangement.
So, you know, first, I'm going to speak.
Go ahead.
I appreciate the community, you know, being concerned, and I empathize with the warehouses and where they're located. But I'm only focusing on the design considerations of the project. So first off, we're not anti-warehouse in any way in the city. What we are is against bulk building mass that generally has been, that hasn't been minimized to fit the characteristics of the community. Meaning, a 42-foot warehouse next to someone's backyard that they can see over into, and the lighting and all this stuff is not, is not, I don't see that as how that would fit. And I don't believe they've basically addressed that in a way that would be good for my community. The other one that I am most concerned about is if they were to try to put in warehousing, because we're not against it, I would immediately expect them to either, A, not have it look like a square, and do something with the sizing to make it look, or the building should maintain the scalability of the residences and neighborhoods around it. Or I would totally be willing to allow them to put up trees fully matured that hide the warehouse completely to where no one could see it. Which means that would be not, I'm going to put in, you know, some sort of trees that match the area, and in 40 years, they might be hidden. I mean, it's hidden on day one, and I don't see it, and I think it's forest back there. Because I don't see how we put this there in the community.
I have a question for the applicant.
Go ahead.
So as a resident, an elected official, a parent, my platform has always been on safety and security. And as a community, when anything changes, we're always trying to see how this impacts the resident, and as we live. So can the applicant reiterate for me, please, what is being done in terms of ensuring the safety and security of the residents in the neighborhood?
And I believe your question is specifically as it relates to the design of the building.
And I would say operations, but.
Well, I was just, thank you. I was just going to ask for a little bit more clarity on, we've talked about safety relative to trucks and cars.
Yeah. And I was asking if you could please reiterate that for me.
Oh, okay, great. Yeah. And I don't know, Nick, if we can bring up that image of the site plan again, because clearly I didn't explain this, explain this well.
In your defense, there were a lot of slides, and I might have just misread it once.
It's okay.
And I thought I, I thought I'd understood it a certain way. That's why my first question was, is this coming down Bear Hollow? And maybe it's just that the traffic mitigations on Bear Hollow made me think that we were getting more trucks there, which would have been a concern.
Right there, that's good. Yeah, thank you, Nick.
That's what did it. And I think we, we looked at the traffic mitigations north of there shortly after this. So, okay.
Right.
Yeah.
That was my mistake. Thank you.
So what we've, what we've done is, you'll see, you'll see the truck court. It's identified there with that restrict idling to three-minute sign. So that's where trucks are staging up against the building. And when trucks, let's just start with when they depart. When they depart, they leave the dock, and they, they go right towards Bear Hollow. When they get to Bear Hollow, that driveway, that curb cut is angled to the right, forcing the truck driver to turn right. If the truck driver turns left, he'll drive over, like, I'll put a boulder out there. He'll drive over a boulder and damage his truck. So he can only go, he or she can only go right at that point in time. And then, as far as, as far as cars, keeping as many cars off of Bear Hollow as possible, most people are going to come to this site going down North Mather Boulevard. And the way it's set up now, originally, rather, we were going to have them turn right on Bear Hollow and turn left into the auto court. That's actually a, you know, that's a good way to enter the parking lot for the office space. Public Works has, I think wisely suggested, let's prevent that. Let's put a median there that blocks that left-hand turn into that parking lot, forcing the cars to go up North Mather and turn right into that squiggly driveway you see there. And so we like that idea. And so that's how we're keeping as many cars off of Bear Hollow and keeping as many trucks off of Bear Hollow north of the project site.
Thank you. A quick question on that. Are you open to options of having no truck traffic during the nighttime?
We are not.
Thank you.
I'll make, I'll just echo some of the things I heard, too. I remember years ago, we talked about broken sidewalks. And we had 20 or so people come and speak. And I remember the Sacramento Bureau wrote an article saying that the city council ran into a buzzsaw of opposition. And I saw 20 residents show up, had concerns. Lots of them wrote, wrote down their comments, and they were very thoughtful. And I don't know if there's a reporter out in the audience or paying attention online, but this wasn't a buzzsaw. These are people that are concerned. And I heard very well-thought-out arguments and positions, and, and I appreciate all of them. I can say I have read all of the emails that I have gotten on this subject. Many people that wanted to know my opinion ahead of time. And I will tell you that we've, as you do this long enough, you'll learn that if you state a public position to a project prior to getting to a public hearing like this, you could be forced to recuse yourself, whether you support or oppose it. So I'm sorry if there are people out there that were demanding to know what I thought of this project. Because legally, I have to wait until today, until we have an actual public hearing where the developer gets his time. This is essentially a court of law proceeding. And we have to be, we have to remain unbiased to it until we get to this point. And I think you've heard from our city attorney, I think I agree with him, that a lot of the requests around here of just outright denying this project probably isn't legal, and probably isn't something that we could do, and probably wouldn't accomplish what a lot of you want, which is just this thing to go away. So in, in that gaze, looking at this project and deciding, how can we make sure that this is as neighborhood-friendly as we can? Because I think, you know, even probably when the county zoned this back when they did 20 years ago, and again, I think I lived in the Thomas, or I was, no, I was probably still going to UC Davis, I don't think anybody envisioned, not only that this use would be here, but that most of these, of these parcels would be proposing this use. I don't think three or four years ago, we would have thought this. But if you look at, at least I know, the number of deliveries that come to my house every day now, especially in the last two weeks, with the holidays coming, I, boxes and boxes and boxes are dropped off at my doorstep. Seems like hourly. And they come from buildings. And they come from buildings like this. And unfortunately, in, in this day and age, retail, I mean, we, we haven't, you know, the item right before this was to approve a residential development in what we all thought someday could have been the next Amazon headquarters or big tech, you know, headquarters for a company. And now it's soccer fields and houses. And part of the reason is, is if you look at our business park out here, which is, I believe some people call it the, the largest private sector job hub in Northern California, where before the pandemic, 60,000 people commuted into this city every day. And now probably less than a third of them come to work. And so this site, this space that some, that we all probably thought was gonna be a nice business park or something else, those aren't the uses that, that, that people want to build today. And it's really unfortunate that, like, that there is this land, it's, it's restricted because of the airspace, it's restricted because of the, the runway to certain uses and this ended up being one of them. But I, I think, I, I'm not comfortable moving forward yet with this project. But what I will say is, I think we really do need to understand what was the definition and the expectation of an industrial building like this and a warehouse like this at the time of the DA. You know, I think we've heard things like Class A today is 40-foot and certain other things. There have been other developments or, or other projects like this nearby that are not that tall. So is, were those buildings that were approved, is that our standard? I think, I think this is a moving target. I, I, I don't think that because the developer says, I need this, that that's what I have to approve. And that we do have some discretion in these and, and I, I do disagree with their legal counsel in part of it, but I, I also admit that I'm not being asked to approve this project. I'm, I'm being asked to approve the design of this project. And a lot of other folks here have really wanted to have a different conversation than I'm allowed to have. And I'm sorry about that. I wish there was another way to have a different conversation, but that decision was made before we were ever a city and long before I was ever sitting on this council. And so I'd like to understand, what is, what is that discretionary height in design? I know I was the one that threw out about the, the trees and I know Garrett just brought it up again. You know, that's really, that request is really stemming from a different project that I, that a lot of us get to look at every day. You know, now that I live in the South area and I go down Sunrise and I can see the last auto dismantler on Sunrise before you hit kind of the open space where the, where the shooting center was and, and the Park District area. And there are 25-foot redwoods there that are really great and they hide everything, but it took them 25 years to get that big. And we had another dismantler that got built and we approved a really bright electrical or, you know, mechanic sign there. But they gave us pictures of these trees. And then they put the trees in and the pictures that they showed us were 20-foot trees and they put in five-foot trees. And someday they'll be big enough to hide those stacks, but probably long after my kids are married off and out of college. And they're eight and 11 at this, at this point. And so when I look at it, and, and, and we've run into this multiple times where we get these renderings and it's like, yeah, here's the tree we're gonna put in. And, and it's like, yeah, but I gotta wait 20 years for it to look like that. So I'd like to see a, a better masking of that. You know, e- even if we look at some of the other industrial buildings that have been designed over there in, in, you know, in adjacent areas, they have some articulation to the top of the buildings and stuff. You know, what kind of discretion do we have as far as seeing the tops of the buildings from the residential homes nearby? This is not next to, unlike some of the other ones that may come before us, this is not next to residential development in homes, but it's, it's less than a thousand feet in some, in some cases. Is there a way for us to, to do any research, get examples from the, from the developer as far as what the line of sight is from the park, from the school, from the homes that are nearby? And is there a way to ensure that that roof articulation is below that? You know, there was reference to the, to the National Guard building. Now there's one example where we had zero, say, they don't have to ask us, they, let me put it a different way, they didn't even have to show us what they were gonna build. They just built it. Similar for anybody who, who may or may not like the new water tower at the VA. We were just driving by one day and I'm like, hey, look, something really big's being built over there. And then the next day it was a water tower. So.
A very ugly water tower.
And so i- in some of these instances, things get built and I have, not only do I not have any power of review over it, they don't even have to tell us. So the, the national, the, the National Guard just built the building, put in the, you know, there was zero, you know, collaboration with us for that. The VA can do pretty much whatever the hell they wanna do. And those are, those are examples of, I, I mean, I'm sitting here as mayor, in two weeks I'll be sitting over there and I'll just be another council member and I'm pretty sure my colleague here to my, to my left is gonna be mayor. But I, I will tell you that, you know, there's only certain things and certain powers that we're, that we are given. And unfortunately, this development was county property when they asked for, for their development agreement. And they get to keep it. And so as I look at this and I look at what things I feel I have authority over and I feel my colleagues have authority over, I really wanna understand, what was the expectation of this type of product 20 years ago? Because that's what they're entitled to build, not what today is the standard. What kind of masking could we do to make this one look better? And to hide it better? And that's just a standard that over the years, I, I feel like we've been pushing more and more on with any type of development like this, let alone if it's near homes and, and schools and parks. And I'd really, I, I mean, I, from a, I, I don't think that some of the requests that I had here about, that one of my colleagues had about hours of operation. I get that, that from a noise standard, that that's part of SEQA and that's, may have already, that ship has already sailed. But I think those are reasonable requests. When, when you're talking about, about reverse beeping on trucks and, and alarms and, and those natures, operating on the weekends, operating at nights, operating very early in the morning, are things that I would like to understand from staff. If there are, if those are things that, that we have the ability to, to ask for. It's unfortunate that when we asked the developer that the answer so far to at least, to me, two or three reasonable requests have been no. But do we have any discretion there? I'd, I'd like to understand that. And so at this point, I, I'm not comfortable moving forward with an approval of design. And again, I, I'm fully admitting that I don't believe that I have the authority to deny this as a use. As much as there are a lot of residents that would have hoped that we could, I, understanding what, what I've been advised at from legal counsel, my understanding of cities and communities trying to do that and they just end up in the court. And to be frank, a judge may not have the kinds of concerns that the five of us up here have of what we can prevent and what we can, what we can try to, to implement into the project.
So Garrett started to ask some questions about architectural design as a way to minimize the mass of the building. And so to the extent that, it's almost funny that when we talk about articulation around the top of the building, the difference is a foot. As something, I don't think actually from ground level, you're gonna be able to tell that this building is a foot taller over here than it is over there or shorter or whatever. And so going back to the definition of warehousing, the letters seem to imply that a Class A warehouse is what requires the 36-inch or 36-foot clear space inside. But Adam, there seems to be some concern about, we didn't, we're not necessarily mandated to approve a Class A warehouse.
Yeah, yes, I.
What was it, Class A?
I certainly, I certainly don't think you heard the applicant point to a specific place in the code that it says Class A warehouse next to the word warehouse.
Larger footprint, shorter walls. But there could be more articulation in this building just from an exterior design, both horizontally as well as vertically.
Paul Carroll referred to a four-sided building as requirements in the, in the SPA. He made references to Tuscan pedestrian safety, which I think we could check that a little bit. And undulating land is sort of typical for the neighborhood. So I don't know if I would describe the building as Tuscan.
No, it's, I just.
Or is it in the Tuscan color palette that's in the neighborhood?
Uh, no, our building.
I'm not gonna judge that.
Except for as people have repainted their, their houses and we have a significant number of houses that are now painted gray.
Or undulating land, I like that reference.
But no, we don't have any, we don't have, we're flat as a board.
Having lived in Stone Creek, that was, I mean, there were definitely some benefits in that neighborhood, including the appearance of the general neighborhood and the bike trail.
Absolutely.
Yeah, beautiful, beautiful neighborhood. I also have empathy for, for the people in this room not wanting this use. What's in front of us though, unfortunately, is the, is the design. That's what we've got in front of us to talk about. But I just wanna tell you, I hear you loud and clear. I've responded to every email I can, I can find and get on this topic, trying to share as much information. You've heard much of it here tonight, I think. So there, there are some things I'd like to look at and I think figure three might typify sort of where I think the issue lies with the design as it's been presented to us. Can we pull up figure three from the staff report?
I was about to say that they, they've been, they've been, they've been working off of something completely different, so.
It's okay if it takes a little bit of time.
You're talking figure three of the elevation.
Figure three, yeah. Looks like this in the staff report. This building is, I think roughly 50 times the volume of a house. So it's, it's big in the neighborhood. It's a big, massive a building. I think my colleagues have mentioned height, you know, is an issue. Is it 40 feet? Is it 37? Is it 36? Is it 42? And what is the, what is the variation in that height? I've heard my colleagues talk about a Class A structure versus Class B and whose code and what year we following. I just think we need some more visual Sims and we need to look at the specific design of the building versus our, our goals. You know, we don't wanna see a long monolithic structure. I, I think, we don't wanna say long, flat lines, that's gonna sort of point out that this doesn't belong in the neighborhood because you don't find those in the neighborhood. I think you wanna minimize the massing to the greatest extent you can with variation of color, height and articulation. And those are standards, I think, that are in the SPA. Avoid the long, flat lines and minimize the massing. You any luck getting figure three? We have some Sims in figure three and some that you've seen here tonight. I don't know that we have them from, you know, the four sides of the building. I don't know that we have them from Mather or from the National Guard site or approaching the National Guard site.
Actually, we don't have the view of the truck bays.
Yeah, I don't think I've seen the truck bays in any, unless there was some large attachment or something that I, I missed it in. There, figure three at the top. So Linda, you were mentioning that there's, you know, a little articulation on the top of the building. You can see color variation, particularly on the left side of the building as we're looking at it. But you really can't tell that there's much height variation except at the absolute corner. Right? And that's because there's a lot of articulation at that, I think that corner popping out towards us.
Yeah.
At least that's the impression I have from the.
Yeah, the darker gray piece looks like it's a little bit shorter than the, than the walls on either side of it, but that's it.
I'm reminded in a way of what we asked of Target. Do you remember when Target went in on Olson and the whole back of the Target faced Folsom Boulevard, which is like Main Street? And we said, you can't just have a blank, stuck a wall back here, you gotta do something with it. So they did something like this and then they put windows in it in addition, like, like show windows, like a department store somewhere, right? And I think they thought.
Facing light rail, you're saying?
Yeah, facing light rail. Facing the back parking lot and light rail and, and Folsom Boulevard. And I think they thought we were nuts at the time, but if you drive down Folsom Boulevard now and you see that over there, the impact is very different from just a wall.
Absolutely.
So, you know, ideally, I would say if this looked like an office building, that would be like a big measure of success. It looked like an office building, I can't see the trucks from anywhere. I drive by, I think, oh, office building. So I think maybe more articulation, fake, yeah, would look business professional, huh? I, I think that's a goal we could look at. How do you, how do you improve that? So there's more variation, not such, such a long, flat sort of monolithic-looking structure there. So articulation is good. Design relief, maybe that's the way you would, would, would state it. The industrial character is a little minimized, particularly on this corner. I'm hoping we can minimize the industrial character a little bit more. I think if you're living in this neighborhood or you're considering moving to this neighborhood and you see industrial buildings near your home, that's worrisome with regard to property value or, you know, what's the quality of life gonna be near this? So I think that's something that we gotta, we gotta be careful we don't degrade the neighborhood by making this look like an industrial facility. It's gotta look like something other than that.
Actually, David, that's a really good point because if you contrast this with the National Guard headquarters, National Guard headquarters actually looks like the building where a lot of people work. This doesn't. It looks like where a lot of rollouts work.
So there has been progress made on screening the truck parking and, and the Sims and the images that are in the staff report sort of show that. There was one that even showed a truck exiting. I think the applicant's comment was the wall was too short there in the SIM, is that right?
Yeah.
It's supposed to be two feet higher than what's shown. I think that's figure five. That's, that's definitely a step in the right direction, screening that entrance so that people can easily look into it as they're passing on the street. Yeah, lower one there, figure five. There's a truck exiting in that image and there's a wall on the right. I'm wondering, as you come down this street, can you never see, can you never see the truck bays? And if you're on, Mather on the other side, that's sort of going uphill and maybe around the back of this, can you look down and see trucks and truck bays from that, from that vantage point? Because that is another way to enter the neighborhood. And I wouldn't wanna miss the foresightedness that Paul was referring to.
For Mather, for Mather, you'd be able to look straight into it because that's elevated over the neighborhood, right?
You're up higher.
I mean, there's like a.
I don't know.
Fifteen-foot.
Probably.
Drop off or, or difference?
I've ridden it many, many times on a bike. I can't, it's probably 15 or 20 feet, I don't know.
But the, the trail's a little bit below the road, right?
And there may be a little excavation happening with this project.
I think we're right.
Somewhere around there. So I don't know if we've thought about that, that view at all, but four-sided building, if that's in the SPA, I think that's what we, and that, that's a general standard we've held to, four-sided buildings versus two- or three-sided buildings.
Unfortunately though, there have to be truck bays. There have to be roll-up doors. Just the way they, the things like Sam's Club and Home Depot have roll-up doors and actually Sam's Club, they relocated the, the roll-up doors.
What, what I think would, and I, I started to ask this, but what, what would be helpful, because I know the, the applicant already stated that, that this sound wall where the truck is coming out of, the one that is to the right of the bottom photo, was raised, I, I think he said from 10 feet to 12 feet? Is that right, Nick? Okay. What would be helpful, and hopefully this doesn't take too much work or too much time, would be to have some, I don't know, renderings from specific views to see, like from the park, from a two-story house. What are they looking into the back of, right? Are they looking into the back of the bays or are they looking at trees and a sound wall? Because this is, this is ample for the distance and the view that you're looking at. Because, I mean, we're looking here as if I'm in a car driving in front of it. So I'm out in the street of this. What does it look like from a thousand feet away? What does it look like from 1,000 feet away? I'd be interested.
And if there was something that sort of gave us the sense of scale of the neighborhood, I'm the council member who was asking for not just the site plan, but what's around it. And we've gotten pretty good at that in staff reports. We don't focus in on just the site now. It's, you know, backup, get the context. But I think from this building mass perspective, you know, what does it look like next to the National Guard? Future versions of this are going to have.
I'm not concerned about what the National Guard's looking at, the people.
Right. But what does it look like, you know, in that residential context or from a pedestrian? From a trail user? What's it look like?
I would say from a trail, I I I mean, I, it's going to be above it. I don't, I don't know if there's anything that we can do there. But what does this look like when we're watching our kids play soccer? What does it look like from a two story house that's next to the park? Looking out, you know, at their backyard, what is, what's it going to look like? And it very well may be hidden and 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 be screened. And I'll even give them that, you know, you know, take the shot of the six to 10 year old trees or six to 10 years after it it opens. Let us see what that looks like. But I'd also like to see what it's going to look like on day one. Because, again, that's, I've been tricked on that before. And I'm still staring at trees that.
Darcy, page 10.
It's going to take a long time.
So the yellow line on the northeast side of this is the line adjacent to the National Guard. And they have all of those solar panels over there. I have no idea how tall the solar panels are. But so people who live in the Sonoma Village who all side on to Air Park, they don't, they're not, they don't front Air Park or back up to Air Park that I can remember. I think they all side on. And so they would be looking across the parking lot at the National Guard and across the solar, solar array before they get to the trees, which according to the yellow say are 24 inch box at 141. So it looks like there's trees all the way around. But I'm, I'm only guessing.
Is there a wall on that backside as well?
Is there a sound wall in between this and the and the National Guard?
Yeah.
It's an existing wrought iron fence.
Yeah.
It's a wrought iron fence, so you can see right through it.
Yeah, there's no requirement for a Masonry wall because they're adjacent to a similar use.
Contain more sound if there was a Masonry wall.
Again, I I I am very, have very little concern about the disruption to the National Guard as far as design standard.
No, I think the sound would go right through the guard towards whatever uses we have out there, soccer fields or or residences.
Isn't the, isn't the guard on the other side?
No.
The garden would be right next.
Bear hollows, and it's at a bear hollow.
National Guard's right here.
Right. No, no, that's what I'm saying. But the soccer fields and homes are to the east.
Would be that way, but I think houses would be beyond the guard.
Yeah, there's ones to, there are ones to the north, that's true, yes.
On the other side of Air Park.
So I think we need, we need a little more time to.
Where the park was.
Think about this, to work on this. But I'm hoping the the applicant, the developer, if you could respond to some of these, I mean, we've had so many questions thrown out here. We could probably as staff help like compile some of them. If you you'd be able to address those at some future date, that would be great. Or respond in writing, that would actually make it faster.
Yeah, that would be fantastic.
I agree with my councilman. We've heard a lot of comments today and we definitely need to think about them. One thing I'd like to ask the applicant is this literally impacts the air we breathe, the sights we see, the sounds we hear, our sense of safety and security. So on some of the requests that we've asked you, I know you've flat out said no. But when you do respond to some of our comments, if you could be a little more flexible on your responses, you know, meet us halfway, that would be really appreciated.
And again, I would reiterate, I'd really like to understand from the city attorney and from staff, what of any of those things that we talked about or asked about, could we impose on our own? So I I was hoping to get yes answers, but in the absence of that, I want to understand what our actual powers are. Do you have what you need for tonight?
I I believe so. The staff will be coming back with analysis of the issues you you asked us about. We will be reaching out to the developers to ask for their assistance as you requested in addressing these issues. And in the staff report, we we did anticipate that this would take beyond the next council meeting to possibly get back to Darcy. I do think that perhaps a target date for getting back.
Yeah, so I I have one other question now that you're you're talking about timing of the next meeting. The public records request? And do we have any idea or estimate as to when we'll be able to comply with those requests?
We were, again, we were assiduously working on them last week. We have done for for the public, they have to go through a couple of different cycles of gathering and then looking and and checking. We're we're well along. So I I think that there will be at least some flow of those records in the very near future, meaning.
Days, weeks, months?
Days, days, not not weeks. And that there will be a large volume, if not all of them out within within a week or so.
If we could also just make sure that the council stays informed as to when those have been complied with. I'm not sure, I think there was a three month request there. I'm, I don't think we're going to be able to meet something like that. But the public does have the right to see these documents that they're asking for prior to us actually taking action. I just think from a courtesy standpoint that, you know, they can get it in their hands, have enough time to actually review. But I'd I'd like to make sure that 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 happens as obviously as soon as possible, but also giving them enough time and also considering holidays and other things like that to respond or ask additional questions.
So it sounds like we need to continue this to the 17th of January.
Does that still sound feasible to the?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
And yes, it's an odd day. It's Tuesday because the Monday is Martin Luther King Day.
And we don't work on that day, we volunteer. Then we work on the next day. Thank you, staff. Thank you to the public and the applicant and everybody for your understanding on this.
So that's a motion.
Hopefully we'll get there as soon as we can. So I have a motion to continue to January 17th. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion by Bud, just like my pool of potty, roll call, please.
Councilmember Pool of Potty?
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Aye. Okay. With that, we have no regular calendar items.
Recording in progress.
We have, it was recorded on TV already. They're just recording because we're going into closed session. Before I ask this, it's getting pretty late. Any requests for future agenda items? Thanks.
Oh, I do have one.
Oh, come on.
It's really quick. It's really quick. I'd like an update on the roundabouts at Coloma Road. What's the latest status on that?
You probably want a traffic alterations update for all of Coloma Road, not just roundabouts. Got you. Okay. With that, we are going to adjourn tonight in the memory of Timothy Fairall. And we will adjourn to closed session and be back out to report after that.